Good evening and welcome to our city council meeting. It's Monday, September 6th of 2024. And with that, I'd like us to all stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Lynn Lambert will be here to lead us in prayer tonight. Is this your last night to visit us?
This is the last night when I'll be doing this because I retire next June.
Okay.
So my pleasure to be here. We've really enjoyed the community. We're still here for a while. But let's pray tonight. Dear God, it's always a pleasure to welcome the day and to be in a community where community really means something. And so we just pray for our community tonight. Because always there are important decisions to be made. We thank you for the folks who have volunteered to make these decisions, volunteered to put in the time and the effort and to use their best judgment. And we thank you for all the folks who have come tonight. Because this whole system of government we have doesn't work unless people are willing to make their desires known and to share so that decision makers have real input and real information. And so we just pray for this to be a useful meeting. May it be one where people are able to express themselves well, people are able to listen well, and even when there's disagreement, that it can be done with respect. And so may your wisdom prevail in whatever decisions are made. We ask all of it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. With that, we'll review our minutes from our last meetings.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 3rd, 2024 city council meeting?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move down to our appropriation ordinance, number nine dated September 11th, and look at it for our approval.
Erica, what is the all-around lawn care bill on there for $600?
For code enforcement for mowing, I assume?
Okay.
Yes, yes, for mowing.
We have a contract mower whenever you have private citizens and we have to do a yard cleanup, we contract that out.
Do we rotate that around through different ones or is that?
Historically, you had a role in lawn care for a number of years because they always just came in so much cheaper than everyone else, but I believe he stepped down from that type of work. I don't know if he stopped doing it completely, but he stepped down from doing it for us. And so we've had to find different vendors to provide that work.
We only, we only had one vendor apply to the solicitation that went out this year. So that goes out every single year in about the February, March timeframe so we can get ready for mowing season. So we'll, we'll do another solicitation that time next year and see if we can get more vendors.
Okay. Thanks, Kami.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the appropriation ordinance, number nine dated September 11th, 2024.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve that appropriation ordinance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moves us down to our proclamations and visitors. So first, I would just like to designate October 6th through the 12th as of 2024 as Public Power Week so that we recognize our electric utility for its contributions to the community and to educate our customer owners, policymakers, and employees on the benefits of public power. And we specifically want to remember our employees because they go out in storms and get our electricity back on. Okay, we need to also add an agenda item. It's an FAA agreement that just popped up late Friday afternoon. It has to do with the airport and if you guys agree to add it to the agenda, we'll put it under business, item five.
Mayor, make a motion to add item number five to the agenda for the FAA agreement?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kip, for reminding me. Okay, I believe Mr. Doug Law from Go Augusta is here to recognize the winners of the 2024 Adopt a Pot contest. And the checks and certificates are right there, I think.
Yes, sir, they are. Let's recognize our third place recipient and thank the Lions Club for their participation.
Hang in there for a picture.
Photo of us.
Photo up. Our second place recipient is the Garden Club. Linda, I presume? Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. And the first place recipient is Jennifer Eagleson.
I want to thank you all for working on those pots. They look nice this year and thank you once again.
They contribute a lot to the appearance of downtown. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, at this time, I'm going to open it up to other people that are here about something that is not specifically on the agenda. And Mr. Fowler has asked to speak. He's going to come to the mic. He's going to give his name and address and then his proposition or question.
My name's Charles Fowler. I live at 518 North Osage. And I don't want to waste y'all's time or mine. I've had major complaints about all the trash and drug trafficking in my neighborhood. I've had my property up for sale and everybody looks at my place, tells their realtor that they can't find anything in the world wrong with it and they want to buy it, but after they drive around a block, they tell their realtor that they would not live in that neighborhood. And I know it's because people don't, they don't know pride. And I mean, it's, there's nothing I can do, you know? I've tried to do everything I can to try to make neighbors clean up and they know I'm the one doing it and they don't like me very well. So I guess that's where I'm going to leave it. But yeah, it's cost me over $40,000 in the value of my home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We still don't have a code enforcement officer. Do we? Have we hired one yet to enforce those codes? Not yet.
Kami or Josh? Do we have any, do we have any activity from enforcement efforts in that neighborhood specifically or around that property?
I've been by there and I know Chris went by there too prior to leaving. There are a couple properties where we could get some front yards cleaned up. There was one that had tall grass and has since been mowed. I was by there today. So there's a couple items we can address. Say we don't, we have the ability to enforce the property maintenance code, which would deal with more like paint chipping and rotting wood, windows, doors, fences. But we don't typically cite those issues, so we're not doing that on a consistent basis with all homes and businesses in Augusta. So they're usually used in conjunction with other codes if needed, especially for anything that we're looking to demolish. So I would say we're trying to find a way to handle some of the concerns, but also be able to apply the codes consistently across everyone in the community.
A lot of, one of the things to keep in mind with code enforcement too is there's like different layers and levels to it and there's different approaches philosophically. And so I think that your program has always kind of been geared towards trying to achieve abatement. It doesn't strictly rely on citation and finding people, so it's just a lot of continuous effort to try to work with people and get them to clean up the issue. And that drags on sometimes quite, quite a bit. And then the other thing that happens is the issues are not discreet. So you have this, this thing, but it's not a one-time problem. You get it cleaned up that one time while you're back the very next month doing it over and over again because it's complaint and, and it's driven by the complaint and it's driven by the nuisance and you don't ever really, it's rare that you will accomplish a change in behavior. And that's what makes it hard to keep up with code enforcement because you keep playing whack-a-mole and chasing it all over town. But it's, that's pretty much code enforcement anywhere and so there's a lot of things we'd like to do better with it, but that's the challenge with it as you do bounce back and forth and a lot of times to the same properties over and over and over.
So two questions and Mr. Fowler, one for you as well, sir. And then to staff as well. So what recommendations would you ask of the city to help you specifically? And then staff, what recommendations would you ask of the council to help you do that job more effectively in that space?
Mr. Fowler, can you, can you move to the microphone?
We can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I would love to see the city somehow gain access to be able to take some of the city equipment to go in like I'm going to spit it out, that 504. There is so much junk and everything there that the man doesn't have a job or a driver's license and it's, he's not going to move any of that stuff. He's back to pick up against one of the piles to make it look like he's doing something and he's not. So the only way that property is going to be cleaned up is if the city goes in there with your equipment and load it up on a truck and haul it away.
Do we have, Kami, any type of teeth in any of our codes right now that would allow us to do something like that? Do we have anything that we could?
We do, I mean, we have the authority to abate properties, which the next agenda item is also for a nuisance abatement of a, of a different type, but we have that ability to abate. My, I guess, question back would be, there would be other properties I would consider in the community that also need the same type of cleanup, which aren't going to get done on them, by themselves. So again, trying to treat everyone consistently and fairly. At what line? Like what does some, what does a program like that look like if the city is the one that's going to be going and abating these projects? And also I don't believe that probably a lot of our departments have the resources, especially when it comes to time and manpower, to be able to come and do that when that's not their primary job.
We've, in bad situations before, we've had them assist, so we've been able to pull it together in, in the past. The, the other piece of the code enforcement thing is the idea of the proactive versus reactive. In a lot of places, it's resource-driven and so you end up on a complaint basis as opposed to like a continuous patrol that is always going around looking at it and then enforcing it as you see it. A lot of times you will see cities enforce on a complaint basis. So as neighbors raise the concerns, that elevates it and becomes a primary issue. I'm not saying that that's necessarily a good way of, of doing it, but when, when you don't have enough people dedicated to making that proactive constantly, it does become more of a complaint-driven thing. And so the, the point being is it's all resource-related. And then the other element with code enforcement as a government is people's property rights. We always have to navigate that a certain way. So we have to go through the proper channels to get legal access to things specifically if we're not able to see them from public right-of-way. So you see that quite a bit where, let's say someone has a privacy fence or something that, that blocks in a yard and we would physically have to either look through, look over the fence in some way. Like there's things like that we're just not allowed to do as a government. And so a lot of times you get limited to what you're able to see from the public right-of-way. And there are examples in town that you can see right now that we need to get on. So I'm not using that as an excuse. I'm just saying that's a limitation sometimes when people raise issues about backyards and other things that we don't have a way to access. And if the property owner doesn't allow us to access it, that creates an obstacle sometimes for us to, to get those sort of issues addressed. It's a mixed bag. And I do think that our code enforcement officers in the past, there's a lot more cases that they resolve than what you see that doesn't get resolved, but you never, we never talk about them. It's basically the ones that we continue to have issues with, but they, they were able to build relationships with folks and, and get a handle on that and handle hundreds of cases. But there are the handful that are really bad and, and continue to be bad and that's the ones that we all end up kind of zeroing in on. So I just, I want to give them credit for what they were able to accomplish, but there's still so much more to do and it is constant.
I was actually going to bring up at the end of the meeting, Limerick in Ohio, where we put the new bridge going into the lake area. I don't know who's supposed to be taking care of that.
Yeah, it's on my list.
Okay, because I, it's.
The grass, it's the grass.
Over knee-high, almost waist-high and I keep thinking, I can see where the city's mowed up to a portion. That's why I was assuming it was homeowner maybe, but it also seems like a pretty good amount to throw on a homeowner in my opinion with the bridge and going down. But I don't, I know how it all works.
That's the tricky stuff that has some history too. So in that example, you have some right-of-ways, Ohio being one of those, where for a long time, the city was mowing them. I don't know when that started, but everywhere else in town, the, the right-of-ways next to a, a home are the property owner's responsibility to maintain. So if you go back about maybe eight to 10 years, we had some conversations, notified those folks, hey, the, the city is maintaining these, but technically you guys should be. And so we transitioned away from that. And in some places that sustained well. And I think it was going really well kind of pre-Ohio Street project. Because most people were, were taking care of all their stuff and then we have that large gap when the Ohio Street project happened and everybody kind of got away from that and not everybody came back to it afterwards, is what I've observed. But you only have a handful where that's been an issue. The rest of them, I think picked it up.
I would like to say thank you to the code enforcement officer that was in place back in Ju- July because I had a complaint about a property a couple down from me and I gave him access to my backyard so we could take pictures over the privacy fence in my yard and within a week's time, they made him clean that stuff up. So he did a very good job and I would like to say thank you to the city for that.
So when we do get our new code enforcement officer, can we put his issue at the top of the list?
I mean.
Or at least in line or whatever?
It is on the list. Again, it's figuring out how to, for me to treat cases the same way. Yes, consistently. And then also, you know, we just went through budget season. So code enforcement and those abatements are also a line item in the budget. So I'm not saying we're, we don't have money to spend on abatements. It's just we have a certain amount that's allotted for those items. And while we have the ability to get reimbursed by assessing it to property tax, that reimbursement could lag years. So if we were spending more on those property abatements than what we have in the budget, that would be something we need to look at next year as well and be mindful of that budget authority we have for expenditures.
So there's nobody enforcing code right now? Or is there somebody responsible for that? Pardon me?
I, I have been going out. I've been going out. Susan has been joining me as well. I mean, we've placed 50-plus door knockers on people's doors, you know, requesting that they mow. We've sent out letters. I have more letters to be sent out. I've sent stuff to the mowing contractor. I've probably sent 10 properties to them to mow. I have another list to send to them. So we are trying. There's just, there is a lot of grass that, that needs to be mowed. So I think the most helpful thing would be, you know, for those property owners to try and stay on top of that. And if they have any issues, they can reach out to us. I know we've been trying to find resources. I know not, I mean, and that's the other part of code enforcement too, is not everybody has the resources to be able to take care of their lawn or take care of their house the way they, they want to for whatever reason. And so trying to get them connected with, connected with maybe a department on aging or a nonprofit group that can come out and help them. If there's a church that wants to, you know, do some sort of project, the Boy Scouts, trying to get them connected to those resources is also another part of it as well. Because like Josh said, our goal is to get those properties cleaned up and to get them abated, not necessarily punished and fined because you're still not getting the property cleaned up.
Is that typical for the system manager to do that? I mean, are we interviewing people for the position?
Yes, yes, we are interviewing. No, it is not typical, I wouldn't think, but I mean, we're, we're trying to stay on top of it and show that we're still, I mean, it is still a priority for the community. And I have a list of, I would say, larger abatements that deal more with personal property and aren't just grass. So my thinking was, we'll keep making that list. That's something good to work on in the winter as well when we're not so focused on the visibility of the grass.
And that, I don't know if this one was on their list or not, but we have the, the one out on Seventh Street that, that we have had to battle for abatement for years directly adjacent to the Wendy's. I don't know if it's on their list or not. I just called the, the sign out there directly to try to, to get some action and I haven't been able to speak with anyone and not try to supersede things, but I just, I wanted to make a call and see what they said and I didn't get an answer.
Yeah, the landowner is in Chicago, so he doesn't care.
And unfortunate, I mean, I have the letter to go out, so it'll get mailed tomorrow and then it'll be another 10 days before we can go back out, re-inspect. Then we needed to get a work order generated, get that over to the contractor and then he has X amount of days to get that mowed. So it's still, when you start the process, especially if they haven't been notified initially, it can take two weeks.
Mr. Fowler, thank you. Go ahead.
Kami, I mean, do we have a ratio on homeowners compared to renters on, on, for the abatements? Are we finding more rental properties? So would we talk to landlord to maybe get this cleaned up a little bit more than the tenant? Or?
I, we have not typically tracked it at that level. I know we do have some rentals. I mean, we kind of have a mix of property owners living in the city or living in Andover or Wichita. I mean, we even have some that live in California or Chicago. So it, it really varies on, on where those owners live. I've done some research on some different municipalities that have established housing departments, which we do not have. But they, they do more with like rental inspections, so inspecting rental homes. And then also some municipalities have required that if the property owner does not live in the community or the zip code or in the state, they have to assign an agent that the municipality can reach out to for issues like this. So that's something to look at in the future maybe is trying to get an agent assigned to that property, especially if they don't live in the state.
Counsel, I would say too that as the person, I, I send those to the county for the certification against property taxes. And the majority of them where those are being sent are not Augusta addresses. So they're either vacant properties that don't have a home on them, they're vacant commercial properties, or they're homes that have been demolished or homes that are just vacant. I would say probably out of the 15 or so I just certified, it looks like maybe there's two that were mailed to Augusta addresses and one of those is a landlord. So I don't know that that's the utilities or the, he's the property owner, but that's not, it's a rental property.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Appreciate you coming up here.
Yeah, and Kami and Josh, thank you for your input as well. And A, thank you for the consistency concern. That's a, that's a serious and critical piece to it. So I want to make sure that enforcement is equitable, right, in that space? And being mindful of the property rights, I know that we have a fine line in that space. I think with what I'm hearing from Mr. Fowler, so to kind of bring it all the way back to where we started. Mr. Fowler, you, you mentioned that your agent has received feedback from agents. Is that accurate? And so if we could work with Mr. Fowler perhaps to collect that documentation from the agents that have shown and provided that feedback, that may be part of the mitigating piece that identifies why this property is being handled differently than what other ones in the community that may be eligible for that same property remediation.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Perfect.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
See. Are there any? Is there anybody else here that's wanting to speak about something that is not on the agenda already? Okay. You have five minutes. Give your name, address.
My name is Troy Kramer. I live in 1105 Ada. And unfortunately, in this last conversation, my entire spiel's really changed because it is all about code enforcement. I actually own the same house, model house that this gentleman owns. He prices this house $40,000 more than the market's at. And he's in a really bad area and that's hurting him and he could use some help there. But code enforcement is terrible, especially within your own city. Now, I went to Mr. Kraft over a year ago and complained about the ADA ramps on the streets on Dearborn. The ADA ramps the government paid for that you guys are supposed to maintain. I got no response, so I went to Mr. Shane and I asked him if he could help me to get those things cleaned up. And if you have those pictures, I would appreciate if you put them up. And those are recent. Now I said, I, I went to all the corners and sent a dozen pictures to Shane and he was supposed to take care of it. And he told me it would be taken care of. It was put on a list and this is four months ago. Well, now, if you could do the other picture, please? They're overgrown to the point where you can't walk. Now, there's dirt underneath there. That's why it's growing weeds. Now what you're doing is you're restricting your elderly and your infirm and your handicapped to live in their house because they can't get through that. If they step in that, they're going to slip and they're going to fall. I slip and I fall. My dogs won't walk through it because there's so many thorns in it, but it's negligence. I brought it to your attention over six months ago. You haven't done a thing. You now have 30 days. Without that, I'll have to go to the ACLU. I'll have to go to the ADA in Topeka. It will cost you more in travel and legal fees than to just take care of it. If you spent the time that you spent on State Street to get ready for your car show, if you spent just that much labor, you could clean up all of Dearborn. There's only so many streets in this town that are actually walkable. A walkable town is a healthy town. If you can't walk, you can't keep your health up, especially at 80 years old when that's all you can do is barely walk. I layla's across the street from me on High Street. She can't walk two blocks because the streets are so bad, the sidewalks are so bad, she can't even try. She's scared to. And it's right across the street from Garfield, where all your students go every day and it's dangerous as hell. I mean, it's like a roller coaster. Come down. I'll show it to you. It's your ghetto, Mike.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, it's yours. You should maybe come down there. I've never seen you in my neighborhood once.
I drive down that street all the time.
Stop and knock on my door.
I will.
The other part is vehicle compliance. You have vehicles parked in yards all over town and that's bringing your values way down. But you also have vehicles parked in driveways that cover the sidewalk. And the folks can't walk through the sidewalk. They have to walk in the street. Your old folks aren't going to do that. You're all going to be old one day. You're all going to be old one day. Would you like to be treated this way? Y'all live up north, y'all live North Kelly. I know it, except for one of you. It's time to start paying attention to your revitalization areas. We moved here because it was a revitalization area. That means not only the homeowners, but the city is involved in revitalizing the area. And if you don't do your code enforcement, if you don't get rid of the goats, if you don't get rid of the crap and the trailers in the streets, you're not going to revitalize anything. Question? Probably not.
Troy, we-
I just have you know that I did grow up on Ada Street.
I heard that.
Fifteen years.
I heard that and I-
And everybody had pride in their neighborhood.
And I'm trying. Have you seen my house?
Well.
You see my yard?
I have seen it.
I try to take care of it. I take care of your city's yard. But right across the street, there's been a truck parked in the city's yard in the negative space for three years. And there's a cop that lives three doors down and nobody's done crap about it. You got cars on yards all over town. The city looks like a dump. You want to bring your city up? Get rid of the cars in the yard. It's not hard. Safety should do it, not compliance, because when you call con, compliance, they tell you, oh, you have to call safety because they don't deal with anything with wheels. And I learned that from the trailer on twelve. So why aren't the cops giving tickets to all these cars that are parked in yards and parked in driveways that are covering the street? I have nephews with law degrees. You have thirty days to get those things cleaned up. Or it's going to cost you more than it's worth.
Troy, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, staff, uh, Josh, you probably recall when I, those pictures he sent to me that I sent the staff, did, and I went back and took the pictures afterwards because they got done. I, I think that was a one-time deal. They got done. They've grown back. Um,
They, they, they need to be fixed.
I took pictures two weeks after you gave me that and they'd gotten to it.
No, they hadn't gotten to nothing.
And it's gotten past.
There are some that never get dirty because of the water.
Okay, okay, that's fair. That's fair. I just want you- Okay. Okay. I just want you to know that I did take action to the staff, just so you know that. I did take action to the staff. And I went there. I'm talking now. I'm talking, sir. I'm talking. I'm talking, sir. Yes, please. I'm talking now, sir. So here's the deal. Um, we gave you your five minutes. You, you're inaccurate in the fact that I, they did clean it one time. I saw that. Our, what I do agree with him in, so we have the worst sidewalks in Ward Two. My wife and I walk it all the time. We got the worst in the city. And that's why I've been campaigning, as you all know, staff, for, for that sidewalk improvement. We've had multiple conversations about it. And I'm told that we're going to go that direction. If we get that one percent down, we're going to do a lot, that one percent tax. We're going to do a lot more towards those sidewalks and make them walkable. I agree with him. A walkable town is a healthy town. I a hundred percent agree with that. As a matter of fact, I agree with that more than, I couldn't be more in his corner on that. But I want you to know that I did take action. I admit, we didn't get done the way we should have. I'm sorry. I apologize to you. But I did take action. I, I take action on anything that's brought to me, just so you know. I want to be clear on that.
Sir.
So you've got to be up here to-
You have to be up here to speak and you've got like two minutes.
Five minutes, so I want to say five more. You want to throw me out? You know, call Trump.
You already have the laws in place to get your sidewalks fixed. You're just too timid to do it. You're too much friends with all your friends. You grew up here in this town. I understand that. Small town, I got that. But you already have the law, the laws in place that you can force these people to fix their sidewalks. Now, I know there's homeowners that are elderly and there's people that have issues, but your landlords, your slum lords, and I walk all over town and I can tell the difference between someone that owns a house and one's a rental because the rental looks like hell. It hasn't been painted in years. The gutters are falling off. The yard hasn't been done. The trash is barely hanging out because the tenant doesn't care because the landlord doesn't care. But you have the ability to care. You can care about your city. You tell the landlord to fix his sidewalk and you're going to fix it for him. You fix it for him, you put a lien on his properties. You can't sell it till he pays you what you paid for. You can have your own concrete company in town. There are so many sidewalks wrong here. You could actually have someone bring in a subplant. A subplant they put up temporarily. You can fix the sidewalks that you want to pay for. You can fix the sidewalk that other people will have to pay for. But I know this one percent crap, you're going to go and put a sidewalk on Lulu and you'll put a sidewalk in another city that, you know, street that doesn't have a sidewalk. And everybody has a crappy sidewalk. It's going to have to live with it. Because you ain't got the balls to do the right thing. Grow some.
I appreciate you. I really do. I appreciate your passion and thank you for coming in here. I appreciate it.
You heard the challenge, counsel, so.
Yes.
I used to live on Ada. Eleven seventeen Ada was my first address.
Okay, we add your name and your address now.
Jennifer Eagleson. I live at forty-five twenty-eight Southwest One Twentieth now. Um, we used to live on Scott Drive. We moved so, twenty-seven years ago. I bought my first house while I was in nursing school on eleven seventeen Ada. And I will say the sidewalks have been crumb the whole entire time. I've lived there. I mean, and I'm not joking. There's tree roots and this kind of stuff. I don't have kids that go there anymore. The, I, my kids were little when I first had one. But it has never been good there and it is a risk for the city because they're, it's fall risk, trip risk, your ADA people, and there's a lot of people. That was an elderly community when I lived there and it does need cleaned up. I'm not going to lie. We've been down it and it looks really bad. Like, it was rough when I was there and then it went through some stuff and it was better. And then there was a two, a nice apartment complex on the side and another house that was put in. But since then, it's not very good, guys. It needs some looking. Uh, and the sidewalks do need looked at for the community of the people that are special needs. There's a lot of people here in the community that are special needs that live at little homes. I've seen them as a nurse practitioner. There's like five different homes here. They, they walk around and travel around bicycle. I mean, you're looking at a fall risk wheelchair dumping out. I see it. I see it in the ERs all the time from bad sidewalks. So please, look at that.
Thank you. I agree.
Thank you. Just some side information. There's a couple council people and myself that drive around whether on a car or bicycle or walk, and we take pictures and we turn them into our code enforcement. We don't have enough money to do what Mr. Kramer would like us to do. And we're not sure how to do that because we just raised property taxes a smidge and we caught heck for it. But if we start this, there's going to be more people yelling at us than Mr. Kramer from the other side. So we need to be ready for that. Roll up our sleeves, put our hard hats on because it's going to get ugly because we tried it ten, twelve years ago. And I, I'm ready for it again. I drive up and down all the streets in town at least once every couple of months. Go out early in the morning, I take pictures, I turn lists in. It's sickening how many people in this town do not care about anything other than getting out and getting high, I guess. I don't know. It's really sad. Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor, is there anybody else here that had a comment? Yeah.
I'm sorry.
My name is Mike Schrader. Live at five oh two Country Lane. Been listening to everybody about the money, about the code, sidewalks and everything. We have no money. In the last couple of years, I've been living in Augusta for fifteen, almost sixteen years now. And last couple of years, the city was given three hundred or five hundred thousand dollars for road improvements and such in the city. But somebody voted to build the bike path from Andover to Augusta instead of using that money in the city. Now, there's supposed to be a bond to build for eight hundred thousand or a bridge to go over four hundred and fifty-four. All right? The bike path was supposed to keep people off of Seventieth Street. They're still on Seventieth causing a nuisance. Nuisance. Now, with that money, the bond, instead of building a bridge, they do like everybody else. They take their bike path. They go up to Santa Fe Lake Road and fifty-four. They wait for the green light. They could cross the street. We don't need to be building a bridge. We can be building sidewalks and such. Now, for the code compliance where I lived at in Texas, small town, farm town, called Casterville, Texas, about sixteen miles west of San Antonio. They had a code compliant, but they also had a fire code. And the fire code said any house in that city that had ten inches of grass or higher, any house that had any boxes, stuff just piled up against the house, that was actually a violation of a fire code. And the fire marshal turns around, the, the code compliance had the authority to do it. They find the guy. They had two weeks to clean it up. If not, the city came in, then the city gave the bill to the homeowner or to the landlord. And they kept on doing it. And when you have a yard being charged eighty bucks to clean up, but it was basically, it was the fire marshals that were coming in. If the grass is too tall, and I think it was ten inches, if you had pop junk along the house, in the house, um, abandoned cars, the stuff piled in, that was all a fire hazard. And the fire marshal got involved with it. And it was actually a fire code for the city. Maybe that's something we need to look at here in, uh, Augusta. You know, and not just code compliance, you might have to get the fire marshal because that is a fire violation. Because if one house catches on fire, you know, the one right next to it is going to get fired, especially if all those houses are in, uh, you know, need of despair, you know, and everything. So, well, that's about all I got to say. My five minutes is up.
Thanks for coming up.
Thanks. It's a good idea. We might check into that. We have a fire marshal right here.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Let's move down to our first item of business, a nuisance abatement for East Belmont Avenue. Staff?
Counsel, before you is, um, a recommendation to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, determining that a nuisance exists at, on East Belmont Avenue and ordering the removal and abatement nuisances within ten days as specified in KSA twelve dash sixteen seventeen E. I will preface this with this was a project, or project, this was a case that the code enforcement officer was previously working on. Um, so I know he had met with the owners of this property who do not live in Augusta, but he did go and meet with them. He had talked to them about this specific property because there is, um, a drainage easement that goes straight through it. So Josh brought up the map, the kind of goldish yellow lines, um, are underground storm sewer. Um, the blue dotted lines are more of the natural kind of drainage ditches. Um, sorry. So there have been times throughout this year where the, even the grass around the drainage ditch has been above regulation. Um, this picture was recently taken prior to this meeting. It was taken last week. So someone had gone out and mowed the grass. Um, the owner of this property did receive their first notification for grass compliance back in June, I believe. Um, so we are authorized to send our contractor out there now to do the grass. Um, but as far as this overgrowth of brush and trees and just all types of vegetation, um, we wanted to bring it before the council to get approval for abatement, um, because I do not have an estimate of exactly what equipment our contractor will need or how much time it will take him. Um, we have shown in the pictures and he did state that he could get this cleaned out. Um, we have received numerous complaints from neighboring property owners about this and it's backing up the drainage in the area. Um, so that's why we're bringing it before you do, to try and get abated today.
Kami, can you give us a little better description of where that's at? What's across the street on that?
This is a Belmont and Custer intersection right here.
Okay, thank you.
And the other side of the property, I believe, is the county. So it's kind of, and there's just these really slim, narrow lots, um, that are really just have those drainage easements on them.
So what was the conversation with the property owner prior to the last code enforcement person leaving?
This is just from my recollection, um, of meeting with the code enforcement officers that he went and met with them, I believe at their home or business, um, and showed them the pictures and explained to them that it was a drainage easement and that it needed to be cut down. So we weren't prohibiting that water from flowing because it ends up flowing, I believe, kind of under the road as well. Maybe. So there's kind of, there's a drainage. Um, sorry, maybe Anthony can help me out with the term, like a culvert.
I think it drains into that pond for Willowbrook right there as it, as you follow the blue line. Right. So did the property owner agree and simply not do it? Did they decline? What was?
They, they have declined to maintain it. They have not, other than the grasping mode, which I know historically, some of the neighbors have taken that upon themselves to keep the grass down at least. Um, so that is not necessarily always a property owner doing either. Um, but they have not touched that drainage ditch. And I have, I believe those conversations started even back in February of this year. So prior to grass season starting for them to maintain that drainage ditch and it just has not been done.
So my question, and you don't have to answer it tonight, but I would like us to look into this because I have asked this in other enforcement efforts. I think repeat offenders are people who simply, um, also in this case, declined to participate. I think that there should be a different pricing in those situations to where, uh, the cost of not complying feels punitive when the behavior doesn't change. And, and I don't know that that's necessarily going to be a popular opinion, but it clearly, if it's cheaper for them to simply let the city maintain it for them at a lower cost of fine, then that's bad business for us. And so I, and I've, I've got some specific remediation properties that we've talked about in the past where it's been repeat offenders. That, that, that's where that comment was originating from. This one feels similar when we've just simply received notice, declined to participate, and we're just waiting for the city to do what the city's going to do, which is likely take action, cut it down, send the bill or put it on their tax assessment and then wait or try to collect when taxes are due and we keep going. So again, don't have to answer tonight, but I would like to look into a different pricing structure for different types of offenses in that regard.
If I may, you're, you're not just talking about that little clump of grass right there. That's maybe where that receiver is or where that rock is. You're talking about Clerch of the North, aren't you? It is very thick. You're in that black box, correct?
Correct.
Up at the north end of that black box, it's, it's extremely heavy.
So the, the open ditch appears to start about here. And so that, that's, I think the core concern was the flow of the storm water, at least from the open ditch. Are you saying that up further north than that?
In that picture there you're looking at, where's that clump of grass at that you described? Down where the star is?
I believe it's, yeah, I believe it's down.
And you're, you're talking about clearing all the way up though to the end of the black box, correct?
As much as it's ation, that needs to be cleared so the water can flow.
I, it's very thick in there if I'm-
It is. We had the contractor look at it to make sure we even had somebody that would be willing to, to clear it out. Um, because we do believe this goes above the grass contract that was signed.
The red line is the city-county line, right?
Correct.
Yep. And the blue line are the drains or the-
It's the open drains.
Drainage, open drains.
Thank you. The, we have to write ordinances and things to cover all that. Mr. Ruggles?
Ron Ruggles, twenty-three thirteen Crest Street.
So what's the distance from, from, uh, Custer up to the, and how wide is, I mean, what are we talking about there? I mean, I know you, I know you've kind of explained that, but- I mean, what are we talking about there? I mean, I know you, I know you've kind of explained that, but I'd just like to know a little bit further with. How far is that? Is it, is it a quarter mile? And how wide is it?
Takes us a minute, but he can measure it off of Google Earth.
It's over fifty yards. I know that.
It's quite a ways.
And you're asking to the top of the box or the open?
Just the, from the star down on the south end up to the, up to the water tower. Just curious.
Oh, to the water tower?
Well, I mean, that's the, that's the area of interest, isn't it?
I don't think it goes to.
That short width.
I don't think it goes all the way to the water tower.
Okay, that's what I want to know. How, how much? How much?
Uh, five hundred and thirty feet probably to the top of that black box. It's about two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty feet, maybe of open channels.
So that's the, that's where the issue lies in.
The drainage issue primarily, yes. And the channel itself is probably not the same width as the whole.
Sure.
Parcel. It's probably much smaller. The whole parcel is about eighty-five feet wide. That channel is maybe half that. So, so two fifty by thirty or forty channel with that sort of growth on it.
Thank you.
And council, you can see that. So I, I don't know if this image date is perfectly accurate. This says May of twenty thirteen. Sorry, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. It looks like that was lower then. So maybe this is a more recent growth and they have maintained it before, but I, I don't know whether to trust that image date or not.
At least since, so there was a, a grass letter sent in June. And then there was an initial abatement letter sent in July. But with the staff turnover, we didn't get that to council by the specified date in the letter. So we sent another letter in August and established today as that council meeting date to vote on the abatement resolution. So at least during that time, there has not been any progress made.
I'll make the motion for approval of resolution number two zero two four dash sixteen, determining that a nuisance exists at zero 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 East Belmont Avenue and ordering the removal and abatement of nuisance within ten days as specified in KSA one two dash one six one seven E.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Okay, item two. Imminent domain ordinance. Staff.
Sorry, I got my map going everywhere. Uh, Mayor and Council, this item is coming back to you for formal action from previous conversations. If you recall, um, we have a broader effort in the area on the east side of the railroad tracks around Grove Street where over time the city has been slowly acquiring the residential properties that remain over there and consolidating that for future city complexes. We purchased several of them down here on the south side. We own all of the property all around this home, and then this is the only home that remains. We started working with this property owner, came to agreement on pricing a long time ago, but their property is tied up in probate. And over the last couple of years, they have not been able to resolve the probate issue. And so I worked with the city attorney and we had this idea of going through the eminent domain process to acquire it and then essentially able to pay into the court whoever's managing that estate and, and get it acquired. But then they can resolve how that gets split up to the individual property owners once the probate happens. But I'd like to turn it over to the city attorney, just kind of walk you briefly through the process from this point forward, what you're executing tonight, and then maybe what, what to expect going forward before this gets resolved.
Thank you. Uh, so this is the ordinance that would authorize this, me as the city attorney to bring the eminent domain proceedings in district court. Once the eminent domi, domain proceedings start, there's a procedure where appraisers are appointed and the, and the property is valued and acquired for that value. I mean, a high level overview, but unless the council has any questions.
How long has this house been abandoned? That we, that we know of?
Abandoned, I'm not sure. I think the original, the owner of it, the declared owner has been passed away for maybe three to four years. And so we started talking with the family back then. When we first made contact, I don't think they were in a position to even talk about it. They contacted us back later and indicated that there was an interest. We agreed on price. And then they said they were stuck in the probate, so we just gave them space and let them work on that. But it's, it hasn't been resolved in the subsequent two years. So this was our idea to try to get movement, to try to get the, uh, the transition of property to happen that they wanted to happen and for us to get possession so that we can, you know, fulfill our plan of consolidating that area.
And for clarity, Josh, they're in, they're in agreement with this process. Is that my understanding correctly?
So you, you can help me on this because I know we reached out to them. We notified them. So the, the last evolution of this is I went to the title company because they, they, the owners, the plumbers contacted me back and said they were ready to move on it. So we started the process with the title company. And then the title company, in working with the plumber, said, hey, the probate's not resolved. And so they tried to initiate it to get it transferred back over to us again, and it was still stuck in the same place. And so I reached out to Andrew, came up with a plan to do the acquisition this way. We sent letters notifying them of the plan, but I don't know if they ever replied or responded to the letter. So can I, and you're saying they haven't yet? So, um, to say that they're in favor of the eminent domain, I can't say that because they haven't responded to it. But the point of it is to do the acquisition, to pay the estate. And then whenever they get the money, or whenever they get the probate component resolved, their money is already sitting there and that, and that's resolved already.
So whether or not this element of the process they were in agreement with, we don't know from no communication, but we do know that their most recent communication and more than once, they were amenable to conveying the property.
Was trying to move the property, yes. And this is our best way of trying to get through that probate component.
Is it the house and the trees? Or which house is it?
I, I believe it's, yeah, I believe it's this one, the only one standing, but let me.
Yeah.
Let me verify real quick.
It is that one. It's by the compost, right?
Do you have any idea what the cost, it's, you know, top end cost would be?
Have no idea what appraisers are going to set it at. So you can, I mean, we've looked at the county appraisal, but I think it's probably irrelevant to what the appraisers are actually going to establish as the price. So we had previously offered numbers. They were accepted. I don't remember what they were. I think fifty thousand or something. Whatever the, the Butler County price for the home was at the time, we had offered them that value. But I don't know what appraisers are going to say.
Is there any way that the city could be bound into some gigantic higher figure than that?
Well, I don't think an appraiser is going to look at that and value it significantly higher, but. Yeah, because you, you have three appraisers that are going to look at it and then the, they essentially issue their, their court judgment through those appraisers to say what it's worth. And so I think out of that and three people looking at it, I wouldn't expect you to get a crazy number. Will it be the same number that we got through a, a straight up negotiation with them? I don't know that. It, it's possible it could go higher. It's possible it could go lower because the property has just been sitting there, not in good condition. I, I don't, I just don't know. The city has had bad luck in, in appraisals like that before when it's gone through an action like that. They were on very different circumstances, very different types of properties. I don't, I don't have a, an answer. I don't know.
So part of this, Josh, are we, are we talking about making approval and then whatever the figure coming in? And we're agreeing to that tonight? Or is that going to come back to us once we find out what that figure is and then we will, we'll do a final approval on that?
That will come back to you.
Okay.
Might as well get a number. Pardon? Might as well get a number.
Yeah. Not the numbers.
I make a motion of the ordinance number two two three nine, authorizing, providing the acquisition of real estate and interest there within by eminent domain proceeding presented to KSA twenty-six two oh one, establish sequence and KSA twenty-six six oh one.
Have a motion and a second. Erica, will you call the roll?
Can I get confirmation on the second?
Mike.
Martin?
Yes.
Bailey?
No.
Scott?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, just reminded me, Mr. Burke is absent tonight because he was ill. Let's move down to item three, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-four, financial services agreement with Piper Sandler. Staff.
Yes, uh, Mayor and Council, this item is actually a continuation and you technically already authorized bonds on the project. If you go back to February, I believe it was twenty-first of twenty twenty-three. Pull it up real quick. Yes, February twenty-first of twenty twenty-three. You took action on this ordinance, this Home Rule Ordinance, authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds for the Red Bud Trail Bridge. So that was the action back then. But if you read through the staff report and you recall the, the plan, the plan was, uh, we were still waiting for the, uh, the announcements on the KDOT cost share, which is another source of funding, a grant funding source that we were waiting on to see if we were going to be able to secure that. And so the authorizing allowed us, um, to start working with our design engineer on the project, but it did not have us actually issue the debt at the time. So we were waiting to see how much it was actually going to cost at the time. The original thought was by May or June of that year, we would probably do the issuance. But we haven't had to since then because you did get your funding from City of Andover. And then we've also had the plan where we've been able to utilize the funding from the Federal Fund Exchange in order to cover our cost at this point. So where you stand right now is the bridge is scheduled to bid, I believe, in two days. The bid opening is in two days. And I reached out to our finance advisor and said that, um, that project's about to, to have its bid opening. We will need to have our money in hand to make payments to the contractor. And so what, what kind of timeline makes sense? And so we were targeting October in order to actually do a sale. Okay? So the bid opening will be in two days. Uh, KDOT has been running that process for us. Certainly, we, we are the sponsor, but, um, KDOT has been directly involved for the entire thing and reviewing estimates, reviewing everything all along the way. And they are also handling the bid opening and all those other components as well. So you previously did the ordinance in twenty twenty-three, authorizing, but did not do the subsequent revolution, uh, resolution to say, okay, now put the bonds out for sale. Okay? So now, uh, we are bringing the resolution to you to take action on putting the bonds out for sale with the goal of bringing them back in October for an actual sale. What the bonds are for is the local match component of the project. So this is for the Phase One Bridge, which is the bridge over the highway. We got, we secured a transportation alternatives grant. This is state federal government money. And that covers eighty percent of the construction costs and the construction engineering on the project. So your match requirement is the twenty percent component of that. So you have to have funding to cover the twenty percent. But if you go back to the original project plans from twenty twenty-one that we've been carrying on from the beginning, the goal for that twenty percent is for us to utilize other federal money that is coming to us through the Federal Fund Exchange to make those payments. Okay? So you have a federal grant covering the eighty percent. You have other money that routes down to us from the federal government for transportation related projects that we're planning on leveraging to cover the other twenty percent. You actually at, I believe at the last meeting, took action on the Federal Fund Exchange for this year. And that's when you, uh, submitted, you authorized us to submit for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar reimbursement for design engineering that we were doing. So these bonds are structured to where the annual payment is less than what the annual allotment is that we get from that Federal Fund Exchange. So the goal is to make those payments over time and then reimburse yourselves and make yourselves whole as the city with that other federal money to cover that twenty percent. So that, that's been the same plan since twenty twenty-one. Nothing about it has changed. And so this step regarding the resolution is essentially to move forward with the bonding component that you had already authorized to occur back in twenty twenty-three. So there's multiple steps in these processes. This is just the next one. Right now, I believe that this bond is structured around like the eight hundred and forty, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar number. The bids when they come in, it's, it's possible they could be lower. It's possible they could be higher. And so we'll have to adjust from there, but I believe that number to be conservative because the engineer's estimate on the project also from KDOT reviewing it has gone lower the, the longer they've been looking at it. They've actually adjusted their engineer estimate downward in the last couple of months. And so I believe that we're shooting high. And so by the time you actually do the bond sale, you will, we will adjust the number to the actual number needed. And if it ends up being lower, there's no further action that council has to take in order for us to move forward with the sale. You'll just authorize the, uh, the award in October. If it ends up being that the bids come back higher, then we have to bring that back to council and you'll have to decide whether to authorize them at that time. So there's another step if it doesn't meet the, uh, the budget goals that were established in here. So we do have, um, representative from Piper Sandler, Clayton Kelly, who helped put together, uh, this documentation and can probably speak to the timetable going forward and process. And I always like to have them come up because they're the experts on how these processes work. We also have our bond counsel, Kevin Cowan. And, um, if I could, uh, if you guys wouldn't mind coming up, maybe Clayton first. But, um, can you speak about how the issuance is structured, timetable looking forward? What, what can council expect if they take action tonight on this item?
Thanks, Josh. And a really good summary. And Mayor and Councilman, thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. Clayton Kelly with Piper Sandler, financial advisor for the city. So in terms of just timing, as Josh mentioned, essentially what tonight authorizes you to move forward to lock in the final interest rate will come back at your October seventh meeting and officially take action. So it's more of just, we'll have, uh, final bid results at that sale or at that, at that time, uh, to approve, to move forward. A decision will be made of whether we want to move forward, locking in that rate. Um, and then we typically allow for two to three weeks thereafter. At this point, it's October thirtieth of what we call closing so that you would have funds available, uh, to start construction. And so, um, a couple of other just points, uh, from the city as a whole, I like to just provide an update to you to give you an idea from a financial standpoint, kind of the position that you're in. Over the last couple of years, uh, really over the last two years, you've paid off three million eight hundred, hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of outstanding bond issues. That's about twenty-five percent of your total outstanding debt paid off over the last three years. So as you're thinking about, you know, potential new bond issue, kind of what that timing looks like. As Josh mentioned, you're aligning this upcoming issuance with the potential, uh, funds that you have available, which it ends up being about a nine-year financing term. So, um, the, the debt that you do have outstanding, you've recently paid off a, a, a quarter of it essentially over the last three years while with this issuance adding another potential eight hundred and forty thousand. But just wanted to give you an idea of kind of that assessment of how much you've really gained a big chunk out of. gained a big chunk out of, out of paying your outstanding debt over the last couple of years. It, it's helpful from a potential investors that would be purchasing and bidding on this to, to really understand that. So a good metric for, for the city to have going into a potential bidder, bond issue bidder. But with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. From a market standpoint, you know, could be really good timing. We have the Federal Reserve on Wednesday, potentially lowering their federal funds rate. The markets, I think there's about a fifty, fifty chance of a half a percent decrease in that rate. So kind of just depending on, on what happens there, but really the, what we've seen over the past probably three to four weeks is, is quite an improvement in yields and rates that you would receive from a potential bond issue. So this could shape up well. I would say if you went out today in the market, you're probably looking at a little under four percent rate for that. So just kind of been thinking about short-term rates, what you've been earning from that over the past, you know, twelve to eighteen months, likely north of that four percent rate. We're now kind of getting in a low, little bit lower interest rate environment, so good from a borrowing standpoint.
Clayton, can you also speak to the second item on here, which is the financial services agreement? What is that and why do we have to do it?
Yep. So part of industry regulations require us to have an agreement with the city. Our term of that agreement is typically two to three years. And so within this action item to be able to move forward.
You're gonna have to lean into the.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Within this action items, there's also a approval of our financial services agreement. So essentially allowing us to have an agreement in place to be able to move forward with issuing this. And I think we've had an agreement in place since twenty, nineteen as part of that kind of two or three-year renewal. But this would essentially just, just kind of start that agreement again, and I think it goes through twenty, twenty-six.
Thank you.
Kevin talk. Kevin? I don't have any questions. I just wanna, I guess I do have a question. So the loans he's talking about, I'm gonna be clear here, we're gonna pay that back with state funds.
The federal fund exchange?
Not city. We're not gonna go ask taxpayers to pay this back.
Yeah, that, that, that's been the plan from the beginning with all of these projects.
That's what I figure. I just wanna make sure.
Can you find a way? And the interesting thing about the, the federal state environment the last few years is, is the funding has been bigger and has applied to more things than it ever has in the past. And so you've had a very unique grant environment that has never existed before. And the kind of the discussions that, that we've had with, with you all and at the staff level is that they have already spent the money at the, at those levels. The, the question is, are you gonna try to bring it back to your community or not? And so in, in this case, where you have projects that, that are so expensive and you have concerns about the impact to your own local property tax base, the challenge has always been is can we find a creative way to utilize these programs the way they've aligned to get those projects covered? And in this case, you secured the major grant for the eighty percent split and your timing worked out very well with the expiration of the South Ohio payoff. So previously, the federal fund exchange, we were not getting our annual money because the state was keeping it because they fronted us money for the South Ohio project. So they just kept it for twelve years. Well, that freed up at the same time that we started looking at these grants. And so when you look at the original plan that we put together, we proposed matching those two things and using federal money for the main grant for the eighty percent and then using that other money that's coming to us from the federal government to cover our own twenty percent. In addition to that, we also secured money from the city of Andover. They committed two hundred and fifty thousand, which they're gonna make the second tranche payment on that in January. And then.
Could you repeat that? I just wanted your.
Andover.
Yeah.
Committed two hundred and fifty thousand.
All right.
And they're gonna make the second payment on that in January. So they gave us the first payment last year.
How much was that?
I think eighty thousand was the first one and then hundred and seventy thousand in And then we partnered with the nonprofit group, Arti, because the grants are related to the bridges themselves. Arti is a group that had partnered with the city of Andover to get the gravel component of the trails constructed outside of the city limits. And so our partnership is something similar is you get the bridges done and then they're working to assist us with getting the trails cleaned up and constructed in between those and then getting those ultimately connected into our town. And so they're bringing resources, labor and all of that to, to help with that. So in this case, this is for phase one. And if you recall, twenty, twenty-three, when you did the, the original ordinance, we had talked about phase one construction and also phase two design. That's why the number was one million, three hundred and fifty thousand back then, and now you see that we're looking at eight hundred and fifty thousand. Well, what changed is we have a second grant application that we've submitted that's for the phase two bridge. That's the bridge over the river. And the state and feds, they changed the program requirements where design engineering, which has always been a hundred percent on the locality, the city to pay for, is now included in the grant match along with construction engineering and construction. And that's eighty, twenty split on all of it. But then the state got other federal funding through another program. I think it was the Highway Safety Preservation Act. And they told us when we were prepping the application to apply for it, that if you are approved for this grant, we will utilize this other funding to pay your twenty percent match. So i- in that case, i- if we're successful in that grant, which I think they're probably gonna announce it by October, they announced in October last year, then that's a hundred percent funded based on what they told us by those federal sources. So in both cases on those bridges, we've come up with some creative solutions to try to get that accomplished that utilizes the federal money without having to utilize local property tax dollars to do it.
Kevin?
Yeah.
You made the trek out here.
I did. Kevin Cowan with Gilmore and Bell, city's bond counsel. I prepared both the ordinance in twenty, twenty-three that authorized the bonds in the project, as Josh has done a wonderful job of describing, and the resolution for tonight, which we typically refer to as the sale resolution. And as Josh said, you authorized a project and bonds. You didn't exercise any of that authority. This directs city staff and your consultants to go do the things necessary to bring bond sale results back to you. So as Josh said, this is kind of the intervening step to directing the sale of the bonds. You, you're not issuing the bonds tonight. Some things could happen that change the issue size or change whether the, the bonds get issued in October. But this does direct, as I said, staff and your consultants to do the things necessary so you're in a position to issue the bonds in October.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to ask one, if you don't mind. On the funding with the money that you were saying from the fed to the state, is there any penalties for us using the Ohio dollars to pay back what you were talking about paying back on the twenty percent or?
We're not using any Ohio dollars. Ohio Street is paid off.
The credit we're getting back, you said you wanted to apply that toward the payment of the bond that we would be making?
You are able to use it for the transportation related projects and this is an eligible project.
Any penalties on that, using it outside of the city? Not using it on city streets?
I don't believe so.
It might be something to check on.
Well, I, so I, I submitted the project to them. I spoke to, to them in depth about it originally because we formulated the plan the better part of two years ago. So I can't recall every aspect of the conversation I had with them then, so that, that's where it came from. So I can definitely follow up again and ask questions.
Has there been any, I, I can ask you later about the property taxes on that, all that stuff. City responsible for any property taxes on any of that at all? It's being taken care of by the city?
So we've already filed for exemption for the property that we're responsible for. So if this were to, any sort of improvements were to put it back on the tax rolls, we'd apply for the exemption of that as well.
So we will be responsible or we won't be? I couldn't understand.
Exemption means?
We were exempt from that?
We will file for the exemptions.
Because right now it's federal, it's federal property. We've taken over trail manager rights when the improvements go down. BODA works in very interesting ways, the, the Board of Tax Appeals. And if you do any improvements to properties, they always tend to look at them differently and then you have to apply for the exemption again, but it's still a government, it's still a government property and that, that will be exempted.
Will it be the city property when we take it over?
It's, it, it is rail-banked federal property. We are the trail managers responsible for its maintenance. Because the rail banking program preserves it for the future restoration of trail, or sorry, future restoration of rail and trail managers are able to utilize it for trail development and trail use in the intervening period.
And tonight, you don't know an exact figure that you're wanting us to vote on?
The figure is in the resolution.
In the, it's, it's.
It's in the paperwork.
It's in the notice of bond sale that's an attachment to the resolution. The resolution references the bonds to be sold in accordance with the notice of bond sale, which is approved in substantially the form presented tonight. It, it shows eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, that's sort of a maximum. And Josh referenced this earlier. Depending on the bids, that number will change. And that's why I used the, the language, you're approving it in substantially the form presented. But if later this week or whenever the bids are due, it turns out you need eight twenty, that will be updated and that will, that notice of sale is what will go to potential purchasers. So they know they're bidding on eight twenty, which will be sort of a final number based on the bid. So it's something of an estimate at this point, but with the opportunity to change it because you've approved in substantially the form.
Any other questions? Troy? Come to the podium, sir. This is all recorded and goes out live on the internet. From what I understand, you're using your FFE and your one percent right now for operating costs and street repairs, street improvement. Your FFE. Federal fund exchange.
No, it's being, no, it's being utilized on this project.
For this project.
We have design going right now. So the North Ohio Street was collecting all of the federal fund exchange dollars up until, I think, twenty, twenty-three.
South Ohio.
Sorry, south, sorry, South Ohio Street.
Here's my question. What happens if your one percent doesn't pass?
What hap?
Your one percent that comes to vote in November?
This isn't related to the sales.
I'm aware of that, but what happens if that one percent doesn't pass?
Why do you say this?
The money that you had for street improvements and to take care of the city, the FFE, you're giving away to the bridge to nowhere. You should wait on this vote until the one percent passes. You shouldn't pass this until you have that one percent guaranteed for the next nine years. Either that or you're setting yourself up for failure.
No, that'll be up to the council. I, I will say that this number is a hundred and fifteen thousand a year. And so right now you're spending probably eight hundred and fifty thousand a year. So even with that, you're not gonna be doing much in terms of street project. You can utilize it for street projects, you can utilize it for other types of transportation projects, but it's not going to be a replacement. It would be a major challenge financially.
And timing is critical on this because we've already agreed to the, the bid letting in this project.
You're, the, what's critical about the project is this is about the thirteenth or fourteenth vote on it. And we have made commitments to the state, to the federal government all along the way. And if you didn't want to do it, we never should have started it. Because now you have grants and everything hinging on it, which we secure for other projects in town. And you do set up a bad precedent to have this carried all the way through to the end when you're getting ready to have a bid to be awarded and then to say that you're going to reject those grants. The likelihood of you getting grants from them in the future for other projects goes down if you were to do that. So that, that's the discussion we've had every, every time this topic comes up is that time to kill it if you weren't going to do it was at the beginning because of further along you go. You create a lot of obligations and expectations with those other entities and that will get reflected back in our other funding opportunities. And we do secure grants for other projects all the time. And so that's the risk of it at, at this point.
And, and make sure my numbers are right, if I'm reading this right. We're talking about eighty thousand of federal money in twenty, twenty-five.
Did you say eight, eight?
Eighty thousand, eighty thousand and twenty-six, eighty-five, twenty-seven. That's the payback that I'm seeing here that gets us to our, that gets us to our eight hundred and forty. So we're going after, if I'm right, eight million dollars of federal and state money to spend eighty thousand a year, an average.
This project is simply part one, so part, part two.
But we're going after a hundred percent.
Yes.
Funded on that one.
Yes.
And if we don't get it, we can, we can stop until we get another one.
Yes, the, the direction and the conversations with council is, has been is, as long as this is grant supported, your support is there. And so that's the activities that we've invested in is doing everything we can to get it grant-supported. So this is not the full eight million.
Correct. No, this is phase.
This only applies to phase one, which is the bridge over the highway. The attachment that you see up here on the screen, this is a preliminary financial analysis for the bond. So the bond that Clayton, Kevin, all of them prepared, it's structured to, basically what we gave them was parameters of here's the expected revenue that we have received annually from the federal fund exchange. What is the required repayment in order to stay within that available revenue? And so you can see they crafted a repayment plan that goes from a hundred and eight thousand a year up to about a hundred and fifteen thousand a year. And a little over a hundred and fifteen thousand is what our federal fund exchange has, has been that if you go back just to the last week, you can see that, that number where we were at. So this was crafted to stay within those amounts. And then we're hopefully two to three weeks out from the announcement on phase two and then we'll see where phase two goes, but that application was for a hundred percent funding.
Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we got the, this grant from the state, was not the biggest award in the state of Kansas that came to Augusta?
There was, I think it was the biggest single award. I think one other city got more, but I think they got two awards that year. So yes, at, at the time, it was about three times bigger than, than most of the other single awards, but I want to say it was in Douglas County area, maybe Lawrence, maybe Lath, something up there, I think, got two grants that combined were maybe the same or bigger than ours, from what I recall.
Mr. Ruggles?
Ron Ruggles, twenty-three, thirteen, Crest. So my, my concern here with the, doing this Red Bud Trail is that, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I see it, there's been taxpayer money from the city of Augusta for you to pay, pay your wages to work on something that isn't within the city limits. And, and to me, that's a little bit like fraud. If I were to do that at my job where I worked, when before I retired, they'd be, they'd be putting their thumb on me. So, and another thing is, so after this thing's built, where's the money gonna come from to maintain it?
There will be money.
Where, where's it gonna come from? Where? You tell me where?
I'm trying to, sir. It will have to be the city.
Okay. It's, it's.
I didn't hear you. I didn't hear the, I didn't hear the answer.
I didn't hear you, I didn't hear the, I didn't hear the answer.
He said the city, also you're going to have a partnership with.
Okay, so that's more taxes at a best.
No, hang on, so it's no different than all the parks, everything else we have to maintain.
But that's in within the city limits.
It's true.
This is not within the city limits.
No, but the other thing is with the trail, you've got people coming from Andover or Wichita. They're spending tax dollars, which also, the fifty percent of the tax in the sales tax goes directly back into fixing your streets and your sidewalks.
So what's the meantime on ROI?
Return of investment?
Yeah, what's meantime, how many years is that going to take?
I don't know, I don't have an answer for you.
Well then, you're, you're, you're just shooting, shooting in the breeze.
But how much city dollars are we talking about spending here to pay back?
Yeah, how many are we?
Zero right now.
You should know.
It's zero. What we're bringing to you is, it's zero of Augusta taxes.
There's going to be maintenance done on that thing.
Correct, but we have people coming in at that time.
Taxpayer's dollar, just like he said.
What's, Josh, we had a, I, I get what you're saying.
You get what I'm saying?
Well, yes, but we're also, at that time of maintenance, I'm hoping that maintenance doesn't kick in. You know, we're going to have people coming and using our community, you know, and, and.
So how, how do we, how do we quantify what people, what is coming in from out of town to maintain that?
We actually have a software, Josh, will it track those?
We, we have a software. The, I know that the trail group, and I think they actually have this information tonight, if you want to see it. They also have their traffic counters on the trail, so that, that can tell you that the traffic, it doesn't.
I'm sorry, Josh, from May seventh to September fourteenth, there were thirty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-one users on the trail.
Okay.
Thirty-three thousand.
And, and, and so between what points?
They've got a couple of different counters.
Okay.
I don't actually know that one.
Were those in, were those all in Butler County, is that where?
Yeah, in the past.
Because it basically, after you get to Wichita, it turns into, on the other side, it turns into a different trail.
So in the past, and we can have already verify that, but they have counters that are east of Andover. They had counters, I believe, that were at Indianola Road. I don't, I don't know, did, did you end up going out further than Indianola? Ruth? Yes, where the counters are placed now.
Ruth? Ruth, could you come to the podium? Because I have a question for you. Thank you, Ron. You can stay there.
I have one more thing I'd like to say.
I, I really think this ought to be put to a public vote. I really do. That's all I.
That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ruth?
Ruth Holiday, five-two-two East Crestline Road, Andover, Kansas.
You're representing Artie?
Representing Artie, correct.
Yes. And if I remember right, we have an agreement with you where you folks are going to do a lot of the main maintaining.
That is correct.
Of the trail.
We have workdays usually once a month, but this month we've been out three times.
How much does that cost the city of Augusta for you to do that, Ruth?
Zero.
Yeah, so our, our costs are going to be in, you know, we do have time invested. I, I don't spend every moment of every day working on it, but you do have some time invested. If we do any sort of partnership with Artie, so for instance, they do most of the work with the, the creation and the building of the gravel component trail. They also do a lot of the work with the cleanup of the branches and overgrowth and, and that sort of thing. But it may be that the city takes a trailer out there one day if they need a trailer to throw their materials in, and then we run it down to the, to our burn pit or something like that. So there's going to be examples like that. You're going to have, you're going to have to pick up trash on, on the trail.
Tough to hear you, Josh.
You're going to have to pick up trash on the trail, so we'll have receptacles and things out there. And we'll have to add that to, to our route to, to pick up with probably one of our UTVs or something like that. So there's going to be examples like that. And I, I've never claimed you would never have any kind of cost whatsoever regarding this project. It is a substantial project, it is a regional project. And I think it is an unreasonable expectation that you will have zero cost for anything on it ever. But the biggest challenge to this point has been, can you get it constructed in a way that's even remotely feasible to us? And so the focus has been on those grants and on the bridges, which are the biggest hindrance to getting that done. And we're getting close on those components of it. Andover has had a relationship with Artie for a while, and, and they've been doing a great, it's been about ten years now, hasn't it?
Correct, over ten years.
And, and so you guys have been assisting with the maintenance on that. We will have long-term costs where you have to do inspections and things on the bridges every so often. So I've talked with our engineers in the past on that. Regarding the property is, if, if you go and, and look at it, it's outside of the city limits, but the city of Augusta is, is on this, probably, we are the trail manager in a rail-banked program. And a lot of rail banking is not bounded by city limits, but somebody is responsible for it. And we are the local sponsor as Andover is the sponsor out to the highway. So that's outside of, of their city limits as well. But they have a, an agreement with the federal government to be the responsible party for that property. And so that's just the way that the federal rail banking works, and that extends outside of your, outside of your city limits. So that's everywhere in the country with rail banking.
I think the goal here, the way I see it, is how do we bring more people to this town? You know, when I got on and we talked about goals, we hadn't had a neighborhood built in twenty years. And people's want your taxes lower, well, how do you lower taxes, neighborhoods and businesses? We, we were doing none of that two years ago, we hadn't done it in twenty years, am I correct? I mean, we hadn't put a neighborhood up in twenty years. And people say, why is our taxes going up? Well, you got to do something. Well, then those builders and real estate people say, well, what do, how do we sell houses in this town when you're not adding anything to it? And this is one of those projects that just kind of fell in our lap. Is it the right project? Would I have rather had multiple other things in this city? Absolutely. But this, the name of this is transportation alternative, and the money can only be used for this. We can't, we can't make another decision to use it somewhere else, or I'd be one of the first people saying, use it somewhere else. You know, I'm, I'm obviously not a major bike rider. But I don't see how this amount of money for what we're getting, we're hoping that what it's bringing to Augusta, you know, yes, it's not in Augusta, but what is it bringing to Augusta? We're the beginning and the end. So when people load up their bikes and want to start somewhere, they're going to pull up here and start this trail. Or they're going to end at this trail and hopefully stay in our hotels and buy food. Nine million dollars, no, but is this nine million dollars a city money? Or is this state money that we're going to turn around again, what we watched for twenty years and watch it go to another community? We watch Andover build it, we watch Garden Plains build it, we watch El Dorado have their trails. We watch all these cities do all these things, and we sit back and do nothing, and everybody says, we need to lower taxes. We'll keep doing nothing, and taxes are not going to go down. Is this the best thing? I, I, I wouldn't think so, but this is the thing that fell in our lap that we're trying to get paid through for not any of Augusta taxes, besides some upkeep, which is correct. But.
In the long run, you're going to see the excitement of people coming into town and using it. And I'm also involved on the west side with Prairie Travelers and since nineteen ninety-eight. And Goddard is just growing by leaps and bounds, and all the developments going up at one hundred and sixty-seventh, next to the trail, two fifteen, next to the trail, buy property, you know, or move into a new house, they're developing. We hold the deed, Prairie Travelers does, from one hundred and sixty-seventh to two ninety-five. That's eight miles all the way to Garden Plain. We pay no taxes, it's because it is rail-banked and it's part of the, part of the federal system to continue the. If the railroad ever wants it back, it's theirs. But the amount of good and health it's bringing to the cities is just incredible. We work with Goddard, we work with Garden Plain, we work with Andover for the Red Bud Trail. It's like we call each other, we text each other, hey, you need help here or do you need help there? But usually it's us, we just go out and do it. So it's, it's been a great partnership with all three cities.
So Andover has obviously already developed their, their trail piece, and it goes into Wichita right now. Last year, this was at a District Two meeting, city of Wichita, Becky Tuttle announced that they had secured funding and they were working on, I believe it was Benesh, that's their engineer. We've worked with them before. They were working with Benesh on a pedestrian bridge over Rock Road on the Red Bud Trail. And also pedestrian enhancements at Woodlawn Web in Greenwich. Because Wichita was leaning in to the development of the trail as well. And that runs by their residential neighborhoods, connects with the canal route or the, all of the other, the bike routes and things that, that they have. And so it's, you're, you're, you are one of the last pieces kind of in a regional effort that's been going on. And as the last piece, you get to be a landing spot, a destination, or a starting spot. And the, our discussions have always been, it, it just, Augusta is set up more uniquely than any of these other communities of the fact that your trail runs right through your downtown where all of your business community is. In many other places, it just kind of runs through a random spot of the community and, and folks have to make their way down. In this case, they arrive at your commercial districts. And.
When completed from downtown, the canal route to here would be twenty miles. And Wichita only has three and a half miles left to do and it's on their CIP.
Has any, has the bright bike trail affected any of those communities in a negative way as far as the economy is concerned?
It's increased it.
It's increased it?
Um, there's a, there's a restaurant going to go in next to the trail, right near the gazebo. Because the person that has actually property between here and Andover is so excited when she uses the trail.
Yes.
And it's like a highway of people going back and forth. But we see that coming to yours too, Shane.
Yeah, her and I talked about that, you know, we've talked about it multiple times. And what she's wanting to do is set up some things at her place and start there, take it to Augusta. And she's talking fifty, sixty, seventy bicycles, then spend the day here and come back. And that's significant, that'd be a significant impact. If we feel like, if we have fifty or sixty bicycles downtown, it will feel like an invasion. So, and, and then, of course, they all own cars, so they can come back once they discovered this pot of gold at the end of that rainbow.
You got it. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
We appreciate your support very much.
Ron?
I'm back. Ron Rivas, eight oh three Lake Point Drive. I'm going to try not to argue the pros and cons of the trail, because I know your minds are all made up. I think some of the, the numbers are not the, the build it and they will come numbers that you're expecting. At two percent sales tax, Shane's going to have to sell a lot of hamburgers. Jeff is going to have to sell a lot of beer to ever recuperate the money that we're putting forth to this. But some of the things that, that I wanted to bring up tonight is, one, first is the legality of issuing bonds. I asked this question when I was on the council and never got an answer. But back in October, August of two, twenty twenty-three, we tried to pass a charter ordinance that would exempt us from requirements of bonds counting against our, our debt limit for public buildings. Because of the protest period that, that's in the, the resolution and the state law, there is a protest period. Anytime bonds are issued. So citing the, the KSA fourteen-five-seventy, which is a statute that was referenced when we was trying to do this charter ordinance, it talks about a master plan, and I would assume that this is in our master plan, that bonds may be issued and shall be limited to public improvements within said city. And or you may, you know, to read further, may provide for assumption of all outstanding debt, indebtedness of benefit districts and refunding payments made on assessments. So I would like to know is, do we have, you have the authority to issue general obligations bonds for projects that are not in the city limits?
Kevin, would you mind coming up?
And Dustin, I asked you this several months ago, and I never got an answer.
Kevin, would you mind coming up? So this is our bond council, have them come up and answer the question. So what you're referring to, Ron, that was, that was a different project instead of circumstances from this?
Yeah, so that is a state law under which the city can issue bonds. There are a lot of other state laws under which the city can issue bonds, that's not the exclusive authority.
Can you speak in the speaker?
We can't hear you.
Sorry, there you go.
So that statute, KSA fourteen dash five seventy, is a statute that would authorize the city to issue bonds. Not the only statute that authorizes the city to issue bonds, and in fact, I don't think the city has ever used it to issue bonds. There are separate statutes for main trafficway improvements and water improvements, public building improvements and sewer improvements. In this case, the authority for the city is its home rule powers. There's not a statute that deals directly with rails to trails projects. And when there's not a statute that deals directly with something, the city is free to act using home rule. This isn't the first time a city will have issued bonds for this sort of project under this authority. So I, I don't know if that answers the question.
And that, that was the action that council took in February of twenty twenty-three.
What's our authority to undertake this project? There are some statutes that, that would limit maybe a sewer improvement or something like that that are specific that say, if you're going to issue bonds for this sort of thing, it has to be within the city limits. Fourteen-five-seventy, as was referenced, it, it makes reference to improvements, physical development within the city. But again, we're not using that statute for this. So I, I guess to sum that up, nothing was inaccurate i- in connection with what was said about KSA fourteen dash five seventy. That is correct, that's what that statute says. But we're not using that statute here. There are other statutes that you can avail yourself to that are separate and distinct authority for doing various projects. And so, again, other cities have used this authority for rails to trails projects. And not particularly novel, the first time in Augusta, but again, there's no prohibition. We, and if we were going to use fourteen-five-seventy, there would be the question of, is this for physical development within the city? Maybe not, and then there would be an election requirement. We are not using that statute, nor has the city used that statute, to my knowledge, for any other projects. The, the various street projects you've undertaken, public building projects. So that may be clear as mud, but you have a lot of different options. There are statutes for different types of projects, and, and they're all independent. And if you're going to use one, you have to follow what's in that statute. But we're not using fourteen-five-seventy here, we're using a different authority.
Thank you, Kevin. Anything else, Ron?
Yeah. I, I just want to add to, to Dustin that I did look at the KSA numbers that he referenced in his contracts. And that was very limited as to home rule power and levying taxes to do it. And I'm not, I don't want to pick an argument with him because he's the. And I'm not, I don't want to pick an argument with him because he's the expert and I'm not. So but just as a reminder, when we did this charter ordinance, a petition was carried. And it was able to gather the required number of signatures to force it to an election. And that charter ordinance had no dollar amount, no bond amount issued to it. It was just that it would basically take any debt that we issued for public buildings would not count against our total debt load. And just a reminder, that petition passed. So we did not enact that charter ordinance to allow us to do this. If we issue bonds, which I'm guessing now is in October, that starts that 30-day clock that a new petition can be circulated. And with the anti-tax sentiment that's in this town right now, I hope you have a plan B. I mean, that's just, this is my opinion. Because you, you need to, need to put that in, in, under your pillow and start thinking about it.
Hey Ron, what, what we're putting in front of you is our plan to raise city taxes. The plan we're, we're putting up tonight, are we planning on raising city taxes with this?
No.
The answer is no. So when you're saying that.
Well, I think you're backdooring that Jeff.
Okay, go ahead.
Because using the federal fund exchange, granted, we haven't used that money for several years because we're still paying back for South Ohio.
We did North Ohio without it.
I don't think so.
Without it, you said?
We did North Ohio without this money. Cause it, yeah. So I mean, it's not like we're, we're, we quit working on the city roads and stuff.
Ron, your five minutes is up, I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
The five minutes is up.
Oh my God.
It's a
I'd rather you keep going.
I've got questions as well, so.
If everybody else is okay with it, I mean, we, we need to hear this Ron.
The, the federal fund, um, in 2025, the annual payment is, is $108,000. By, by what, what I've been shown and stuff, our federal exchange rate is 115,000. By the chart, if I can find it. In 2029, our total debt payment will be 115,000. So we're behind. Our 108,000 federal fund exchange is not gonna cover that payment in 2029. Or even in 2026, our debt service is 110,000. So in 2026, we're behind our federal exchange. So tell me, tax money is not gonna be used for this. Not, maybe not this year. But down the road, I don't see any other way around it. And plus, whatever money that, that federal fund exchange money that you're putting toward this trail is money that's not going to street maintenance. The next time we want to do a major street project, it's going to come from sales tax and property taxes, which is a tax increase. I can't remember.
Ron, how long were you on council? How long did you serve?
Total of 14 years.
Okay. Did you, were you on council when South Ohio was approved and the federal fund exchange was used for that?
I think I came on about that time.
And so you've got a pretty local understanding of it as far as that project, it's paying off, you're using numbers. I think Josh has said that we're gonna see federal fund exchange of 115? Is that?
It, it's not a fixed number every year. So again, I'm gonna give you all of the, the correct information on it. It's subject to federal budgeting. So you always have the potential that if they don't pass a federal budget or something like that, and they cancel that program. Now, it's existed for decades. But if they choose not to fund it at the federal government, that would be a circumstance where you've got to figure that out at that point. So it's not without risk in that way. But in terms of what it's generated annually, um, the last few years has been the 115,000 or higher. It's actually higher now than it was previously. And so if you have 115,000 the first year and this payment is 108,000, well then you have money that isn't being used, you're over. And so you, you're gonna set it up to make sure that you're covering your payments. And that, that's, that's the way that it's structured. So I, I don't know if I answered your question, but.
That's, yeah, well, that's what the second number is on your chart. You just moved it, but.
Yeah, I'll pull up the, give me one second. I'll pull up the last, I'll pull up the last meeting where you approved it for this year so we can verify what that number was.
I'm wanting to reconcile what Ron's sharing regarding 2029 and 2026 payments that look to be.
I don't know where those come from because I don't think that they've decided on those yet. We don't get that announcement until like the January or the February of like the year where it's coming.
I'm just going off of the packet, um, net debt service. I don't.
That is not federal fund exchange, that is the bond issue.
But the, the payment, the debt, debt service for 2029 is 115,200.
That's the expenditure. The revenue is the federal fund exchange. The revenue for this past year, the revenue for this year, which we just did at the last meeting, was 115,000.
And we don't know what the debt service will be.
What you're, the numbers you're using is the projected debt service.
Based on
The estimates for the project.
840,000 or 865,000.
Correct, yes.
But, and I don't know what interest rate this was projected on.
So that's included in there. What they were talking about was up to that, somewhere in that 4% or hopefully less.
Well, I'm just, the point I want to make is look down the road and see what, what your payments were gonna be. And how much confidence do you have in our federal government after November, November 5th or whenever election day is? I'm, I'm not a political person, but that scares me. So anyway, the, did I answer your question Jake?
Yeah.
No, you did.
And I had a couple more because I think with South Ohio, right? It made sense to use federal fund exchange. It was a transportation project, right? So when we made that decision as a city, which I was not on council at that time, we opted to not receive that 108, 115, whatever that floating number is on an annual basis for other street repairs. Cause we said South Ohio, right? So South Ohio now is fixed. It generates zero revenue for the city, but it's a fixed street, right? So for, is it 12 years? What was our term on that?
12, 12 to 13-ish.
12 to 13 years, we forewent whatever that federal fund exchange money was in exchange for the completed South Ohio project.
Yeah, can I, can I make one point on South Ohio? So South Ohio was even a unique circumstance that will never be repeated because the federal fund exchange doesn't work where they will front you the money. They did that with South Ohio. If they did that in this circumstance, you wouldn't have to do the bonds. But the reason that that happened with South Ohio is that that project had been approved and was actually in the state's five-year transportation plan before they did away with it. So they made a choice and gave us an option to front us 1.5 million dollars that we would have got through that other five-year plan. And in exchange, they would collect our revenues. So I'm throwing that out there because that was a one-time, unique circumstance. Because if you didn't do that, you would have had to bond. And we did end up bonding on that project. It was just a much smaller amount than it would have been otherwise. But you would have had to bond it in a similar way and then make annual payments. In this case, you do not have that ability to front it. And so you have to do something on an annual basis to take advantage of the fund exchange. I just want to throw that out there because that was a very unique circumstance for South Ohio.
Well, I, I want to make sure, because I also think with the federal fund exchange, to your comment Ron, the 115, if that's the number we want to just stick with for illustration purposes. What could we do from a streets repair with 115,000? Is that a block? Is that two blocks? Is that a surfacing? Is that a reconstruction? Like, just help me understand what 115,000 would do for a street.
So if you're doing a full reconstruction, maybe a block or two at best. So full reconstruction, that's when you're like going down, doing base work, curb, got a whole new street, all of the above. So it doesn't go very far in that regard. But what we've been doing the last few years has been to focus on preservation. So we just did a 550,000 dollar project that did this preservation, which put that micro-surface from Loomis Land down to Seventh Street essentially when it's all done. So that covers a big area as a preservation maintenance. So this is about a quarter of that one project for preservation activities, if you were to do that micro-surfacing.
And I know that we've leveraged the sales tax element so we could bundle our projects and get more value, more leverage for the taxpayers in bigger projects, bigger territories. So the, the federal fund exchange in an isolation instance does not necessarily garner us a significant street repair as a standalone budget item.
Not as a standalone, I, I'm not gonna claim that's not helpful. I mean, every bit you get is helpful.
Right.
And, and that's an amount that you can use. It's not a replacement, not, not even near a replacement for your sales tax. That, that would be damaging to this community because sales tax is the only way that you get any of those street projects done. So it doesn't replace that. It's an eighth, seventh or an eighth of the annual income from the sales tax. But again, that, that's not nothing.
Right.
That is, that is still money. But does it fix all these streets in town? No. Does it fix all the sidewalks? No. But it is something that you could use for those purposes.
Right. And, go ahead.
Josh, remind me, how, how much revenue does one mill generate?
Uh, one mill right now is 84, 85,000.
So we're talking mill and a half, mill and three fours?
But, but we don't use property taxes on street projects. So, and, and if you go back to the presentation we did for the budget hearing last time where we kind of talked about how the, how all these different components work, your property taxes are pretty much covering your people and equipment. So the people and equipment that do work and mainly, um, that's gonna be patching and basic upkeep for us. That doesn't mean new streets. Your projects, the, all this work that you see done, the North Ohio's, the South Ohio's, all of this preservation, that is entirely sales tax. Those don't happen without the sales tax. You probably can't increase your property taxes enough to even make that feasible. Folks would never stand for that. So again, property tax pays for your people, pays for equipment, but it doesn't get you projects. That's what the sales tax does.
So Ron, I'm sure you've got other questions, so I'll let you finish your questions before I keep going with mine.
Well, I just got a couple more comments that through this bond project, over nine years, you're paying almost 172,000 in interest. That figures out over nine years, about 19,000 a year in interest. That you're paying for the luxury of borrowing money to do this. And the last thing, bullet point I got is, is I know Josh made a comment about if we did not accept the grants and stuff and, and, but to me, it's never too late to turn around, say that maybe we don't want to do this. And in the contract with DOT for the bridge, it has a termination clause that sufficient funds are not appropriated to continue the function performed in this agreement and the payment of the charges here under, the secretary may terminate this agreement at the end of its current fiscal year. The secretary will participate in all costs approved by the secretary incurred prior to the termination of the agreement. So that tells me we can cut our losses, get out of the agreement. There's an article in 20, in the Woodstall Eagle late last year that 6.7% of the bridges in Butler County are unsafe to drive on. You think that they wouldn't want some money back to fix some of those unsafe bridges that people drive on instead of building a bridge that people walk on? And again, I'm, I'm getting into the merit again of the pros and cons of the trail, you know, where I stand on that. I, I think if you did a cost benefit study on this, it'd be a loser. It would be a loser. The bids for, for the, uh, for the bridge are getting ready to open. Per the agreement, KDOT designed the bridge. KDOT put it out for bids. KDOT did the specs. They select a bidder. And after a bid is awarded, we have to do right-of-way control. We have to do, uh, traffic right, or traffic movement control during construction. The, read the contract of what all we're responsible for. There's more to building that bridge out there than just the bridge itself. And we're responsible for all those costs. And if you want to look further down the road, the bridge over the Whitewater, FEMA has put out a deal that they are not allowing any more structures to be built in floodplains. And that's a floodplain. The McClures has stood right here and told you that no one is coming on their property to build that bridge. So what does that mean? That means more intimate domain. That means more taxpayers' money. And a bridge is probably gonna wash out in five years. So that's all.
Hey Ron, I got one, one question. Does a city pool make us money? No, you know that.
No.
Does the 300,000 we gave to the Castle Park make us money? Does
But it's
The splash pad, but what it does is it makes a reason for people to come want to buy a house here. I drive by the Castle Park every day and it's packed. It's, you know, we gave 300,000 to that. Not, maybe a eighth of the community uses it, right? Not, not 8,000 people don't use it. But it was something that was a reason for people to want to build a house. It was another amenity. The pool, we lose money every year. We lose money on the compost. But it was an amenity for the citizens of this community. And when we quit even trying to do anything else, I mean, if, if we come up with the 900,000 here for the 20%, would you be for this? I don't think so. And that's where I think a lot of people here are thinking this is taxes we're talking about. Or think, we're, we're talking about a different situation and that everybody just keeps dodging that bullet and never brings it up. But if we cover that 900,000, I think your answer would still be no. I think McClures would be no. I think it'd be several people would be no.
No, I disagree. Because it's still, Jeff, to me, it's still tax money.
So if, so if, if it was 100% paid for, you'd still be against it? Not, not, not the upkeep? Because we're not gonna have the upkeep.
Because it's not a feasible project. Why spend the money to build a bridge over Kellogg that we don't know if we can build a second bridge over the Whitewater to get us into town? It is not a feasible cost benefit ratio project. And that's my opinion.
I appreciate your opinion Ron. No, I appreciate your opinion.
I just want to say something. So I know Andover did a, a study, it's been three or four years ago. And they sent it out to everyone that lived in Andover and they asked, what are the number one things that you want? Parks, trails, things to do outside. Then they asked, what made you move here? Then they asked, what made you move here? Parks, trails, things to do outside. You know, I'm all for fixing the sidewalks. I'm all for reservicing the roads and stuff. But I have never went on a vacation and said, hey, I'm going to the town with the best sidewalks and the smoothest roads. There has to be something to get people there. I think the combination with this path, with the splash pad, the skate park, all the other amenities that we have started adding within the last ten years and continue to go, the, the route around the, the park. It's a perfect, I, I see you walking all the time. It was a great investment. Do we make any money off of it? No, but it's a great investment. And I, I to, I personally believe that the trail, you're going to make some money off of it. The city's going to make sales tax revenue off of it. People that are riding five thousand dollar bicycles or running for where, whatever they're training for, they have expendable cash that they are going to spend. And when they come, they don't come in onesies and twosies. They come in fours and fives and tens and twenties. And then they tell their friends, and then they might tell some more friends, and they come back in a car, in a minivan, in a station wagon, whatever the case is. You know, and I've, I've mentioned before, Pahaska in Oklahoma, there's not a whole lot there. I've probably been down there seven times. But it's kind of a neat little place and we drive two hours to go to Pahaska and spend our money in Pahaska. There's no reason, you know, this city can't do the same thing with some of their amenities. You know, when you start getting more people coming into town, then you need another hotel. Then you need another restaurant. All that stuff is generating revenue. And that, I mean, that's just my piece.
I hope I live long enough to see that.
So, Ron, hey, real quick.
I do too.
Yeah, me, yeah, that, that's a good sentiment, right? Um, so you said fourteen years on council. Um, I'm not going to sit up here and pretend that voting on the various things that come across this is always an easy thing. And I know that in fourteen years, you had your fair share of voting on things that were not easy, right?
Sure.
I know you did not hold the crystal ball that said, if I vote on this, it's going to a hundred percent work out. I guarantee it. I know you can't have that. I can't have that. Nobody that sits up here can have that. I know the dam that's been repaired twice now at the taxpayers' expense. I know you sat up here and you voted for a repair that didn't work, right?
Yep.
So we just paid for that again. I don't fault you for making the best decision that you could at the time that you made that best decision that you could. I'm going to ask the public's trust for that same grace when we make these decisions because ultimately, there's no guarantee on any of it. If we say yes, maybe it works out, maybe it doesn't. If we say no, maybe we don't ever grow, maybe we close another school, maybe we don't have any more houses built in Augusta, maybe we just continue on the same path we're on. Taxes continue to go up because we don't bring any new families to our town. Fixed costs for our residents are never going to decrease. The cost of utilities will continue to increase. The cost of insurance will continue to increase. The cost of wages will continue to increase. The cost of running a city will never decrease. We have an obligation to our taxpayers to figure out how to get more people here to participate in those costs. That's just a really simple recipe for how we've got to figure out how to lower the costs for our existing folks. We got to get more people here sharing in them. And I know you're part of the car show, right? You're a big fan of the car show? How long have we had the car show downtown?
We just did our, uh, twenty-fifth or thirtieth.
Twenty, yeah, like a long time. And has it always been downtown?
Yes.
Why?
This particular one.
But why?
Because we want to help our downtown businesses.
Right, yeah. So do we. I don't own a building downtown. I don't own a business downtown, but I want to help our downtown. And why do I want to help our downtown? A, it helps my neighbors, right? The people that run their businesses in this town are my neighbors. If I support local, that supports them. If we spend our tax dollars here, it keeps our tax dollars here. When we invite people into our town to shop and dine and stay, they participate in our tax play, right? We need more people participating in our tax play. I love that you guys host the car show downtown. I don't think the brewery was here until just this last year. So you, you obviously were doing that long before the brewers here. I know Shane's hasn't been around.
It was our best day we had, Ron.
Shane's hasn't been around twenty-five years.
There was no trouble downtown. You guys did a great job.
For the, for the folks watching at home, I'll, I'll say this because there's a lot of talk and there's a lot of inaccurate talk. And Ron, I saw your post today and I saw the forty-six or whatever comments we're up to on it. There's a lot of inaccurate information and I credit you for doing a lot of research. I struggle with you for not giving a full perspective when you do your posts. So I get that you can have an opinion on the project, but just say that, I'm not for this project. That helps the public understand you did your research, you're not for it. Alluding to anything differently is, that's not good, that's not good public discourse, right? We're, we're in, we're in this to make our city stronger.
I did not read that in my post.
And so I think for those that have an opinion, I will say this. I've lived in our town for the better part of forty-plus years. And for majority of that forty-plus years, I lived on the two hundred or the three hundred block of East Broadway. It wasn't until August, September of twenty-two, I moved to a new house with my wife and kids. And, uh, so sidewalks, streets, schools, safety, dilapidated properties, I get it all. I'm here for the resolution and solutions to make this place better. It's going to take work. It's not going to be always popular opinions, but we got to get some folks to come to our town and we got to make folks want to come to our town. The city of Andover is getting a brand-new restaurant that sits right beside a trail because people believe in the trail and they're parking their own businesses beside it so they can benefit from that traffic. We have that opportunity here. We've already got some restaurants and shops. Bring the people here. Let them support this project, right? I think the cost of the bridge being paid for through federal and state funds, I don't know that you could have asked for a better recipe for having that getting paid for by tax dollars that are not from Augusta citizens, right? I know the car show, when we have the car show, I know we've got streets and sanitation crews down there doing work, doing cleanup, prep and cleanup. I don't hear anybody complain about city staff and city hours being used to help when there's an event downtown. I don't hear anybody saying that they're upset when crews are mowing and upkeeping city parks. I don't hear them complaining when people are out salting streets and helping do those things. I don't hear a lot of complaints when we're delivering on the products that the citizens of Augusta are looking for, the city leadership to help bring projects to Augusta, to bring people to Augusta. And I think ultimately, that's what this body is sitting up here making the hard decisions right now, trying to figure out because for over forty years, the city has done nothing to grow. And I, and I know that because I've lived here for over forty years, right? I know that. I know that we didn't bring in new houses. I know that we didn't bring in new schools. We passed some bond issues to build new schools, but we didn't do anything to help fill them. We closed a refinery in the mid-eighties and that was kind of the, that was kind of the tipping point, right? As far as when things started to slide back the other direction. And so from that point forward, we've done nothing to say, come to Augusta. Augusta is the place that you want to raise your family. Augusta is the place you want to retire. Augusta is a place you want to shop, stay and eat. And I think that's where this council is looking to do something different than what the leaders for the last forty-plus years have done, have done. And so some history for the residents that are watching. From my understanding, in the sixties, Augusta said, we don't want to bus kids to school, so we shrunk or we set our boundaries for our school district small. So we've done that. We're confined geographically by two rivers. And I say confined loosely because I think we've got some creative solutions we can do with housing that looks different than what we've told ourselves in the past. And so there's going to have to be some different thinking and we're here. And that's what we're here doing. We're doing some different thinking. And so if, if we're afraid to change, change is here. We have to do some different things. It doesn't mean raise taxes. This whole project was built to not raise taxes. If you're worried about the upkeep of the trail, we've got a partnership with Artie that carries the lion's share of that. Is there going to be some streets or sanitation crews doing some trash pickups? Yep, there will be. I guarantee it. And it's going to be just like the parks and it's just like the car show and just like any other events. Is there going to be significant bridge construction costs? No, because we didn't commit to that. We said no to that.
Well, you're aware that if a property owner, joint and property owner wants a fence between the trail and their property, that we have to pay half of that.
We are aware of that. And you were on council when we talked about that because Artie's actually talked about. But Artie, 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 Artie addressed that and how they've worked with property owners in the past have expressed those desires and those concerns.
It's money. So I'm done.
Okay.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron. Counsel, the ball's in your field, you know?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I move for approval of Resolution Number twenty-two-four dash seventeen, authorizing the offering the sale of general obligation bonds, series twenty-two-four of the City of Augusta, Kansas. Consider approval of Financial Advisory Services Agreement for the Assurance of Taxable Credit Obligation Refunding Bonds.
Before anybody seconds that, we have to break that last half out.
Can we do that as two separate actions, please?
Just the resolution piece of that, is that correct?
Just the resolution. The Resolution Number twenty-two-four dash seventeen?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Now we're ready for the second part. Consider approval of Financial Advisory Services.
Okay, Financial Services Agreement with Piper Sandler?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Second it.
Got a motion and a second to, uh, approve the Financial Services Agreement with Piper Sandler. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Okay, we need to talk about item four, purchasing and financing a new loader and a declaration of surplus equipment. Oh, you guys can stick around. We'll be here till ten-thirty or so. Staff, do you want to talk about the loader?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah. Ma- Mayor and Council, I'll just highlight that you do have three separate actions. And so just going through the, uh, the sequence, we'll just walk you, walk you back through that, that history briefly. So we talked about this equipment during our, our budget processes. Um, you know, we had the, we had the street sweeper issue this year and then we had the, the loader come up. And I, I believed that we have the loader issue when we were doing the Castle Park construction. Is that where that happened?
Shortly after, yes.
Sort of. Um, uh, the, the loader that we've been using essentially had a, a major failure and I believe we had to replace the engine on it.
Sure.
And so i- it is a, a, a piece of equipment that is critical to a lot of our daily operations. And so we need something reliable, uh, to keep up with that. And right now, we're utilizing, um, some pieces of equipment where the one that electric department has right now is a former hand-me-down from the streets. And the one that Streets has right now is about ten years old. And again, it is used daily, so it's a very commonly used piece of equipment. And we think that it, it's reached the point that for reliability purposes, it is better for us to look at acquiring something new. And so, uh, staff looked at this project and I appreciate what they looked at here because they focused a lot on what do you actually need to accomplish? And, uh, one of the things that we've added, uh, probably in the time that that other loader was, um, under consideration is the stoplog structures and the flood control. And, uh, we have learned that the, the loaders can be super useful at installing that equipment and get us away from our Digger Derrick trucks and electric if we had ones that were actually tall enough and big enough to do that installation. And so that's kind of a new layer to this that in addition to the regular job it does, we think that there's a good emergency preparedness capability and redundancy component. And so I, I like, Anthony, if you wouldn't mind, um, coming out of the budget discussions with council, you guys did a lot of work demoing and looking at a lot of different equipment. What did you learn from those, those demos? And how did we get to this point on this recommendation?
So, yeah. The, uh, we did demo several different, uh, pieces of equipment. Um, we, we all had our favorites and, uh, but like Josh said, we wanted to make sure that we were getting the right piece of equipment to do the job and, um, just not going out for overkill. Um, so we did scale back. We, we tested a Caterpillar nine fifty, a John Deere six forty-four and a John Deere five forty-four. Um, we did find that the John Deere five forty-four could set those stoplogs and we did set those stoplogs in under half the time that it would take for a Digger Derrick and many other people to set that. Um, so it is much more efficient. I think the mayor even, uh, watched us do it.
Yes, I did.
Um, so do you have any other questions about it?
So, does everybody know what we're talking about when we say stoplogs? So a- anybody at home listening, you have closure structures on this levee where there's roadways that pass through them. And the way that you close them is to set these big metal logs and stack them on top of each other. The logs weigh several thousand pounds. You have to lift them really high into the air. And when that project was built, we only had one piece of equipment at that time that was physically able to do that and that was a Digger Derrick truck. We ended up buying a second digger, Digger Derrick truck so that we would have a redundancy in case one of them broke down when we needed it the most. The disadvantage with that system is the way that it, that truck sets up with outriggers. Um, it has had to sit in several feet of water. Um, you don't want a three, four, five hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment having to do that. You also need multiple other pieces of equipment that can move the logs to it because once it's stationary with the outriggers, it can't move. Only the crane component can move. So we've had to use the loaders to move the logs to that structure. So it's very inefficient. So a- all of this is independent of the issue that we have right now of the loader and the core job, the daily job that it does, not functioning. But in thinking about what's the right piece of equipment for us, we wanted to ask that question of what else could we improve for the city? So what it's going to mean is that electric crews will be able to focus on the electric system during a storm. It's been hard for them to do that because they have to help set the stoplogs. Now, with this piece of equipment, our folks will be able to do that. And the electric team can focus on what their core job is, which is the electric system. So, um, th- this is an example of, we, we had a problem, but in addressing that need, we also asked ourselves deeper, what else could this possibly do for us? What other problems do we need to solve? And the team started with some equipment that was much, much more expensive. And the questions were asked is what is the lowest-cost piece of equipment that'll do every job that we possibly need it to do? And so through all their demos, they found a piece that was a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar cheaper than the ones that we were initially looking at. And so that, that's the background that I want to give you because it started with a different problem. Staff evolved the question and said, what other things do we need this to solve? And that, that's spoken to in the staff report. Uh, this is a piece of equipment that's on a source well contract, so you're able to purchase it directly. But it's a sizable enough purchase that you don't just have cash sitting there to buy it outright. And so if you look at the twenty-twenty-five budget that council approved, if you remember from your, your working budget process, we have a line item for leases in the Special City County Highway Fund. City County Highway Fund. About half of that line item is going to the new street sweeper, which if you want to see it, it's sitting right outside of City Hall, so you can go check it out before you leave. Is it still there?
We just put it away.
All right, put it away, okay. Well, we'll, we'll bring it back sometime, bring it back to the next meeting. And then the other half was for the annual payments on the loader, so that's the background on the equipment. The subsequent items are related to how do you do the financing, and I can turn that over to, to Erica to speak to, but we are kind of leaning into the past feedback from council about utilizing our local banks. We did some outreach, and we, we thought that that might be a good option for us this time. So, Erica, can you speak to at least the second and third steps?
Yes, Mayor, Council. And just for clarification, when I was assisting Anthony, I pulled the wrong estimate, and so the equipment quote is actually a little bit less, like six hundred less, it's two hundred and two thousand four sixty-five thirty-four. I provided you with a copy on your, in front of you of the new quote, so if you choose to authorize this, that is the correct amount, not what I provided in the memo. And as Josh alluded to, we, we typically have leased these type of equip, this type of equipment from Murphy Tractor directly through John Deere Financial. They provide us with terms, and we look at what fits in our budget. We've done that, but based on the feedback the council provided earlier in the year about the leases that we had been doing with First Bank, we were going to look and see what we could receive as a rate. We just weren't sure what the rates were at right now, and the timing was perfect because the street sweeper showed up, and I called the bank and said, we need money now. And when we, when you guys authorized that lease back in February, we went back to them and said, it's going to be eight, nine, ten months before we get that piece of equipment. And they said, we can't, we either have to write the lease now, or we can't guarantee that rate. But we didn't know the amount because we didn't have the equipment yet. So, he just said, call me when you get it, and we'll see what the rates are at the time. I called, and they were honoring the same, they're honoring the same rate they provided last February of the four point, I think it's four point oh nine percent. That's what I put in here, a four point one zero, rounded up to four point one zero. And I said, we're getting this loader that we're looking at, that we typically would lease through John Deere Financial, could you provide me comparable quotes for the lease periods that we were looking at? And so, he called me back and said that they provided the exact same quote that they did for the street sweeper last February. That was the low quote provided. I could have called all the other banks. It would have been a rush for them to gather the same information, and I would suspect since our funds are with Emprise Bank, they would still be the low bidder. So, based on that, I provided the two options. The Emprise lease will save us about, let's see here, I think, a little over twenty-eight thousand dollars in interest savings over the course of the ten-year lease. So, the recommendation from staff would be to authorize staff to work with Emprise on that lease as well. And this one won't be delayed because you expect that we'll get that piece of equipment fairly quickly, right?
The loader is expected to be here in forty-five days, as long as it's still on site.
So, we won't have that issue of it being a while before we get it, so we could go ahead and secure the lease and get all that taken care of now and have the funding ready for the delivery. So, we did look at, based on the, the budget that was provided, the ten-year lease for this made sense and kept us pretty close within the lease payments. And then, we were also looking at the sell to the Electric Department of one piece of equipment, and then the auction of the other piece going in our revenue to help, help offset those payments. So, with that, I'll turn it over to see if there's any question about the financing piece of it.
Anthony, do these things last about ten years, give or take?
Ten years, twelve thousand, twelve thousand hours.
Okay.
So, can you just, I'm a little confused about, how, how does it stay out of the water? Not have to sit in the water?
It sits higher. The engine's higher.
It's that much higher?
Yep.
Okay.
I've witnessed, at a flood event, the, the, the new line truck at the time, they backed in to keep the engine out of the water as much as possible, and the radiator fan was sucking the water up and throwing it up on the engine, and that was the best they could do at the time.
Right.
And the loader, the loader engine's higher, and it doesn't do that.
Believe so, they have much larger tires.
And we can set them in like five minutes apiece instead of fifteen.
Right. So, not much water is going to build up?
Yeah.
Good.
So, one of the things we talked about is, is it not just the, how fast you could do it, but you still have the Digger Derrick's? So, in that emergency situation, if you needed to respond to multiple structures at the same time, then this gives you that capability as, as well. So, I'm, I'm all in favor of redundancy when it comes to those emergency-type situations. And, and so, again, that was just an added favorable component for why I've been supportive with this equipment beyond just replacing it for its daily needs.
Counsel, any other questions? This is a lease?
Yes.
Two hundred thousand on one-time payment?
So, we will get the lease, so call it a lease, call it a bond. What you get with leasing or bonds is the bank is going to give you the money upfront to make the payment, and then you give them annual payments over time, so that that's the way this is structured. It's a lease purchase. At the end, once we've made all of the payments, I believe that a great most structure, we own it.
Yes. And Emprise, based on the quote that they provided, is in the dollar amount, which was a little bit more than what it actually will be. They, they estimated that our annual lease payments would be twenty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars. So, that is a lease payment for those ten years. Ten years. Ten.
And so, when you do those lease payments, normally you will do it for the, the life cycle of the equipment. So, in the case of the, the street sweeper, ten years is probably too much with all of those moving components, the vacuums, all of that. We did not get ten good functioning years out of the last one, so we only structured it to be a seven-year lease. In this case, the loaders, we, we've been able to, to make last that long, and it helped us with the financing to get it within the annual payment structure we needed to, to do the ten years. And, and so, that, that also better reflects the life cycle on the loader based on our past experience with them.
Mayor, make a motion to purchase the, purchase of John Deere five forty-four G-tier wheel loader from Murphy Tractor in the amount of two hundred and two thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the purchase of this wheel loader. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, make a motion to authorize staff to finalize lease purchase with Enterprise Bank.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to authorize staff to finalize the lease purchase with Emprise Bank. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to declare case six twenty-one loader surplus property unauthorized disposal through auction.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to get rid of this other loader through the auction. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Michael, thank you. Okay, let's move down to this item five that we added, and we'll turn it over to Josh to...
Yes. Mayor, Council, let me give you some background on this. So, the FAA sent this to me on Friday. I pretty much already had the packets done, ready to go out, and so I've been reviewing it with our engineer to try to verify what's going on here. And I would say, in all likelihood, it would probably be perfectly acceptable for me to just handle this administratively, but since we had a council meeting tonight and council originally authorized the mayor to sign the primary agreement, I wanted to make sure that I stayed within that authorization structure and had you guys review it. So, we have a, this is an amendment. We have our original reimbursable agreement with the FAA that's on the airport runway project that is kind of nearing the end of its construction. And included in that original agreement was the, the upgrading and the commissioning of the different lighting systems that were out there. And there's several different lighting systems. I'm going to probably get acronyms wrong, but there's, there's rails, there's PAPs, there's VASs. This agreement speaks to a different lighting system that is out there that was not included in that original scope, and that's the Merls, whatever that is. But it's one of the, the lighting systems that is used by pilots when they're landing, when they're taking off, it's how they get oriented to landing on the field. What the FAA and what our engineer said is, it's a different type of system, and they don't typically, that they handle it differently than the other ones, and so it wasn't included in the original scope. But what the FAA is sending us is this amendment that says, we would like you to authorize us to modify the scope for the FAA to do an additional flight so that they can do the commissioning on this lighting system that was not included in the original scope. And the FAA is offering to do this at no additional cost to the city within the context of the original cost that was given to us in the reimbursable agreement. So, it's a change in scope. They're adding a flight, they're commissioning a lighting system that they did not in the original agreement, but they are not adding any cost to the project in doing so. So, it's, it's literally just that one and a half-page agreement. They're asking us to execute that. I don't know that there's any problems if we delay it, but our next meeting is like three weeks out into October, and that's kind of nearing the end of the project time period anyway. So, I called our engineer. He wasn't sure if, if it was okay whether to wait or not, so if you would like me to bring this back, I can, but I thought it was a simple enough item that I felt comfortable presenting it to you tonight. So, with that, I will sit for any questions that you may have.
I'm good with it.
Yep. No questions.
No cost, key words.
Yep, no cost.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the modification to the agreement with the FAA. Allow the mayor and yourself to execute those approvals.
Second it.
Got a motion and a second to approve this agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Josh, can we also just upload that with the packet to the city site? So, it's out there, please.
Mr. Mar, did you have anything tonight?
No, sir.
Mr. Brown?
I brought mine up earlier.
Mr. Davis?
I do. I've got a couple things. So, I had somebody call me up behind Lake Point, where the trash dumpster is. I guess it's, when the trash truck comes up there, it's tearing up the asphalt, and I assume it's just, you know, them pulling in and pulling out. Is there a more permanent solution, like maybe concrete for that? It's right there on, on the road that goes around the lake. You, you know what I'm talking about, right?
Caught in a point.
Yeah.
Okay. You said Lake.
I did, I'm sorry. I stand corrected.
Okay.
So, the other thing, there's been some, some outlandish Facebook posts that I just, I don't get on Facebook, I don't do comments on it, I don't argue with people. It, it's fruitless. But there was a couple comments about some things that the city council did, about backdoor deals and raises and this, that, and the other that are one hundred percent incorrect, not factual and wrong. The, the one thing that really did bug me was, there was a comment about the mayor, and, and I don't know of a more honest and wholesome person than Mike Rawlings. When I was a kid, I used to live across the street from him, and for somebody to make comments like that and be disparaging is just wrong. So, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson?
Just wanted to follow up on, do we need to make any kind of action or take any kind of action? I know we didn't make a decision based on our last meeting on the twelve sixteen straight, straight, good lord. Twelve sixteen State Street, Neighborhood Revisation Program. Is there any kind of action we need to take on that? Is that just going to default?
Oh, no. You are absolutely right. I was planning on bringing that back. There, there is nothing else for you to do. I need to, I owe you guys on that one. I need to bring something back, and I did not get that in this agenda.
Okay. Thank you. All right, that's all I got.
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bailey?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Martin?
I have one address. I don't know what the address is. It's on Helen Street, just south of Kelly, on the east side, just across from Robinson Old Elementary School. It's a second house down from Kelly, faces west, doesn't face north.
Okay.
There's a pile of stuff in the yard and a, it's a code deal. I could have brought it up earlier, but I thought I'd bring it up tonight to, it's camp, you can take that and run with it, you know? What's a possibility, Josh, of, I, I asked you about this earlier, about our agendas? Is it any, how difficult is it to get our agendas like earlier in the week, other than Friday or Saturday or today?
If I had them done, I would get them to you.
Like Wednesday?
As, as soon as I have them done, I get them to you. We work on them until they're done.
I'd just like to see if maybe we could get it a little earlier because it gives us more time to study it. And I do have a job, I, I work at a place anyway, and I, I spent my whole day today working on this stuff for this evening, and it was people calling and talking and, anyway, I just, I appreciate that if it's a possibility.
I understand.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Just so counsel knows, as soon as I have them done, I send them out. I'm literally working on them until I send them to you, and some weeks are better than others on getting them done. Sometimes there's items that are being pushed, and we're waiting on materials, so it just, it depends on the week and what items there are sometimes, but I, like, I, I am actually trying to get them out earlier. I'm not, not trying.
I didn't say that, but I just know it takes a lot out of us to have to, I like to study my stuff anyway and look into it, and you, you have, anyway.
I, I understand. It takes a lot to produce that stuff as well.
If it's long, it should maybe go to the next meeting maybe or something, and, but I get it, you know?
Mr. Mayor, I want to say, I did have something to say. I just wanted to thank everyone who participated and gave us their opinion, even though it may be different than what we did, Ron and, and Troy and everyone, I'm glad people came out tonight.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You have to stay and turn the lights off.
Thanks, Major.
Yeah.
What'd you say?
Thought we were... [laughing].[1792.65]